Good evening, everyone. Thank you for taking time out of your busy lives to join us here in studio, Royal Oak City Commission. We're happy to have everyone here. We have a lot of special guests here tonight from the Fire Department, which is very exciting. I'm stalling for two minutes. I don't know if there's a penalty for starting a minute early? Not sure if that's a... We could do that. Yeah, yeah. Some people might actually be finishing up the microwaving of their popcorn, getting their soft drinks ready, snuggling under a blanket to have a night full of entertainment.
It's 80 degrees out.
It's 80 degrees out, that's true. I don't know what that means, but...
No snuggling, no blankets, no snuggling.
Oh, no snuggling, no blankets? All right. So did you guys hear about the... No, I'm just kidding. No jokes. All right. I'm going to call to order the October 8th, 2018 Royal Oak City Commission meeting. We're going to begin with an invocation given by Commissioner Perusch, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand if you can.
As we gather here this evening, we are grateful that we live in a country where freedom of expression is not only tolerated, but celebrated. We are also grateful for the sacrifices that our men and women in service have made since our nation was founded, so the freedom of expression and the other civil rights that we hold dear are protected and celebrated. As we move forward to tackle the issues facing our community, not only this evening, but throughout the coming season, may we have wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and perspectives of the citizens of our community. May we have the ability to work together in harmony, even when there is honest disagreement. And may we always strive to do what is best for the Royal Oak community and its citizens as a whole in an effort to keep Royal Oak a safe, inviting, and peaceful community in which to work and live. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, this brings us to item number four on the agenda tonight, which is the Fire Department Awards. And I believe... I saw some firefighters here tonight. And Chief Cummins? You put a nice microphone conveniently right here. I was reminding... Or I was reminded to tell everyone to speak into the microphone because I struggle to do that sometimes, so...
Excellent. Well, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, Mr. Johnson, thanks for the opportunity to help us share with everybody these... this award process. We've got an awards committee that meets quarterly, and I'm not above stealing good ideas from everybody. And I think if... As long as you'll have us every October being Fire Prevention Month, I'd like to do our Fire Department Awards in October. Okay. If we could, could I get Lieutenant Strauss to come up? Sergeant Gardner? Firefighter McEvany? Firefighter Oliverio? Firefighter Edwards? Firefighter McPherson? These six gentlemen have been selected to receive our lifesaving award. We're in a pretty unique position to do that sort of thing. So it's not simply enough for us. And these guys in particular, they... It's kind of hard to give them awards. They don't like getting awards, especially for what they consider to be just doing their job. So the bar is really high. You have to not only have either been biologically dead, and now you're not, or it was absolutely a certainty, and due to their actions, that did not happen. In this particular case, we had a male that had a witness arrest by his fiancee. She contacted 911. Our crew arrived, this crew right here. They went into action. They delivered three shocks, three defibrillated... or unsynchronized shocks, initiated CPR, did all the things that we do, put the drugs on board, got the patient loaded, got pulses back. They were en route to the hospital. They lost pulses again. More CPR, more shocks, more drugs. We arrived at the hospital. Patient crashed again at the hospital. Long story short, that particular gentleman, Mr. Ryder, could you please stand up? Jeff Ryder. It turns out... You can see he did, in fact, walk out of the hospital, so he meets our criteria. And this was back in April, so he's doing very well. Like I said, do the efforts of these gentlemen. It's always stressful. It's always... When I was on shift, I felt like a save was anybody we dropped at the hospital that had a pulse. That was a save in my book. But like I said, in order to get the award, the standard's just a little bit higher. And I just wanted to recognize these gentlemen for their efforts. Okay. Could I have Sergeant Lippo and... Sergeant Lippo and Sergeant Pearson come forward, please? There's actually supposed to be a third person who couldn't be with us tonight, Sergeant Wilson. This is a... These gentlemen were singled out to receive our Meritorious Service Award. It was due to their actions on a fire June 16th on Washington Street. Sergeant Wilson, who couldn't be with us, has a saying that I've... We've talked about many times over the years. In Royal Oak here, a lot of times, people think we just don't get fires, and that's not exactly accurate. What we do is we keep small fires small in Royal Oak. And it's due to the quick identification of the incident. Our residents call it in. Our residents tend to take care of their properties, and they just don't let them catch fire. But when we get those, what we try to do is we try to keep the small fires small. This particular night was not that kind of night. It didn't get reported right away. It was the middle of the night. It was a large fire on arrival, and it was one of those days in June that was 93, 94 degrees at 10 o'clock at night with 90% humidity, really some of the worst conditions that you can have for our particular job. I was not on duty when dispatch called me. I was actually down in Oxford, Mississippi for this one, so I told them I would not be coming. But as a result, when the committee met, I kind of had to get the story of the fire. And as the committee talked it out, it kind of became evident that the original people that were singled out to get the award, maybe I wasn't as comfortable for that because we heard a lot of talk about effort and guys really putting it out there in tough conditions. And I got to thinking, as a new chief myself, I've got a unique opportunity to talk directly to the commission, directly to my guys, and directly to the residents, and just let everybody know that the reason I think Mr. Johnson tapped me to do this job is we expect... I expect 100% effort on a fire. I don't think effort is something that we need to reward. Effort is expected, and we deliver that every day. But as a part of that discussion, what we found out was that some guys did distinguish themselves in ways other than just effort. In those type of conditions, with our gear, the amount of weight, and that heat, it's real easy to get guys hurt. And what happened on this particular fire was these gentlemen excelled at not only aggressively attacking the fire, even though it was... It was well on its way when they got there. They took care of our men. They rehabbed them properly. They hydrated them properly. They didn't let any buildings besides the original building burn. And what's the most important thing to me is everybody, residents and workers alike, went home safely at the end of the shift. And Sergeant Wilson, Sergeant Lippo, and Sergeant Pearson were integral in that. So I'd like to congratulate them for their work. Okay. Try to wrap it up. I only got two more awards, and I know I get a little talky. Could we get Captain Phillips to come up, please? All right. So Captain Phillips and I have been together since day one. We were hired together on the same day. We went to the Fire Academy together. And he was here, as I was, at the inception of the EMS program, as Royal Oak was the first one in Oakland County, to my knowledge. Is that right, Dan? To do ALS transport? I think that's right. In any case, what you need to know about Dan is Dan's so smart that a 4.0 scale's not good enough for Dan. He's always going to be 4 point something. And as a guy who's been here from the beginning, he's taken that office and revamped it to an entirely new standard. What he's done with his position is amazing, and there's not one guy in our department that won't be happy to tell you what a fantastic job Dan has done. He came up with something that I thought was funny at the time, but when you try to get information to firemen, it's not always the easiest thing. And he came up with this Know When You Go program, where he literally put the information he wanted out in front of the urinals in the station, so guys would have to read them, which I kind of chuckled, like you did. But you know what? I find myself reading it all the time, and I'm learning. So, you know? He sits on all the boards. He sits on a bunch of committees. And again, I... About fourth or fifth EMS coordinator since the start of this thing? Something to that effect? Yeah. What he's done with the office is amazing, and I know that it's extra special for me to be able to give an award to a guy that I came on the department for. And he's just done an amazing job. And our last award, but by no means the least, Fire Marshal Andy Blevins. Andy's our Fire Marshal. He handles all the fire code. And until I became chief, I had no idea how important this man was and how much I was going to rely on him to know what he knows. About a week after I got the job, I went into Andy's office, and he breaks open the fire code, and he starts taking me through sections because when you're on shift, you don't do anything with fire code. So he's trying to teach me a few things, and he keeps pointing at the bottom of every section. He says, "You see what that says there?" I said, "Yeah." He says, "It said the employed authority." He goes, "That's you." So everything he does, you know... If he's not doing his job, I'm going to take a bad fall. And he did point out to me that they could come after me after I leave, too. So I really, really count on him. But if you've been in Royal Oak, you can see the growth here. I mean, from when Andy and I started, it's amazing. But the building that's going on in Royal Oak is unprecedented. And what a lot of people don't know is all of those plans go across this man's desk at one point or another. Every single one. There's one guy. So when we get a fire, and he has to do the investigations, that's four or five days out of his day, or his week, that he can't do those other things. He does all the tests for the sprinkler systems, standpipe systems, and alarm panels in every single one of these new buildings. He goes into the senior high-rises and teaches them, or at least provides information to them teaching. And at the end of the year, he usually doesn't have enough free time to take his vacation, so he's always trying to push that to the next year because he's got too much to do. But the thing that really is an indicator to me is when I was a sergeant downtown, I used to get calls from time to time. And they were constructor... You know, guys that were building projects, working on projects. And they always want their project done yesterday. It's, you know... It just comes with the territory. But then when I became chief, it's been 18 months now, I haven't taken a single call about... From a contractor worrying about getting a test done or worried about getting something done on time. And that's a testament to what this man does every day. He does it so efficiently that you barely know he's there. And again, he's operating above the standard. And I just think that Andy more than deserves his Meritorious Service Award.
Thank you, Chief Cummins, and thank you to the awardees tonight. And thank you to our entire Fire Department, the men and women who served this city bravely, with distinction. And just tonight, highlighting some of the few examples of how I believe, and I think this commission believes, we have, if not one of the best fire departments in all of the state, if not the country. So we commend you for your service. We thank you for your service, and we appreciate everything you do. How about one more hand for the awardees tonight? And Chief Cummins, you look pretty good in dress, you know? Those buttons are really polished. Sure, absolutely. And thank you to all the families who, day in and day out, have to worry about the safety and security of our firefighters and police officers. You guys are also part and part with this award. All right. Well, that's going to bring us to item number five on tonight's agenda, which is public comment. But before we begin public comment, Commissioner Levasseur has an announcement to make.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know many people in our audience, as well as at home watching. They hold the animal shelter near and dear to them. As many of you know, the animal shelter is reliant upon the generosity of members of our community for its day-to-day operations. It does not receive funds from our taxes to cover its operations. Well, there's an opportunity this Thursday to show your support for the good work of the animal shelter. They're hosting an event at Farina's Banquet Center in Berkeley. That's on Coolidge, just south of Catalpa. This Thursday, from 6 o'clock to 9 o'clock. That's to raise funds for its operations. There'll be appetizers and desserts and a cash bar. There'll be a silent auction. And they're looking for a donation to get in of $20. They'll certainly accept more if you want to pay a little bit more toward their efforts. But again, it's this Thursday, 6 o'clock to 9 o'clock, Farina's Banquet Center, located on Coolidge Highway, just south of Catalpa.
Very good. Good cause, good fundraiser, great volunteers, great employees at the Royal Oak Animal Shelter. And oh, by the way, there was a dog named Mr. Mayor that was recently up for adoption. I just want to let everyone know that wasn't me. But, you know? I still could use people to visit me anytime you want. All right. It's going to be one of those nights. I apologize. All right. We're going to talk... We're going to move to public comment now. Just a few words before we begin with public comment. The City Commission both values and relies on the input of our fellow citizens to help make decisions. Now is the time set aside for the public to address the City Commission on any city-related issues, both on the agenda or not. I ask that your comments be directed to the City Commission as a whole and not to individual commissioners. If you wish to speak tonight, please raise your hand and wait till recognized by me, the mayor. Come up to the podium. For the record, we do ask you to state your name and address. And please be mindful that we do want to hear from as many people who wish to speak tonight, so comments are limited to three minutes or less. And we have a timer at the podium to help you keep track of your time. If you don't wish to speak tonight, please don't hesitate to contact any of your commissioners with your comments, email, whatever works best for you. Often, the ice cream section of some of our grocery stores works as well. Please note that the City Commission will not respond directly to questions during public comment. However, we are taking notes, and we'll address questions when the agenda item is discussed. And if your questions aren't on the city agenda tonight, I can tell you that we're taking notes. The city manager's taking notes, and we'll address those questions as appropriate and needed. And always feel free to leave any materials or contact information with City Clerk Halas, and she can distribute it to us and address whatever needs you may have. We also have... I thought we had Ms. Carol Schwanger here tonight. She's out in the hall, okay, taking pictures. So she's helping out for Judy in Judy's absence tonight. So with that, who's first? Yes, ma'am. Yep, the only hand up tonight, so far.
Evening. I'm Erica Sykes at 325 Lexington Boulevard. I'm here on behalf of a group called Royal Oakers for Accountability and Responsibility, or ROAR for short. I was here a couple weeks ago to talk about our first fundraiser. ROAR's ranks continue to grow as Royal Oak citizens, from all different political persuasions and economic means, come together for a shared goal: to raise awareness of the two Royal Oak ballot initiatives on this November's ballot and educate our fellow citizens on the facts surrounding them. I would like to invite our fellow residents to join us this Wednesday, October 10th, at the Dixie Moon Saloon between 5:00 and 7:00 for our second fundraiser. Appetizers and a cash bar will be available. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sykes. All right, who's next? Yes, sir. Fast with the draw.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, Jason Edberg, 120 North Blair Avenue. I'm here to address one of the agenda items tonight regarding food trucks and the ordinance edits that we're considering. I am the owner of a local food truck, the Motor City Pasty Company. I've been a resident of Royal Oak and a homeowner in Royal Oak since 2007. And I ask that, when considering changes to the current status, that you not only consider the amount and the expense that our brick-and-mortar restaurants do pay in rent and property taxes and things, but consider the percentages and the relative ratios of those sales versus those expenses. So I brought with me... There's a consulting company that's the preeminent food and beverage service reporting agency, if you will, Baker Tilly. And every year, they put out a series of benchmarks for industry standards for successful food and beverage operations. And I wanted to pay... Draw attention to one particular item when it comes to rent and occupancy cost standards. So it says, "Occupancy costs includes rent, common area maintenance, insurance on building and other contents, real estate taxes, personal property taxes, and other municipal taxes." Many operators want to keep occupancy costs at or below 8% of sales. However, 10% is generally viewed to be the point at which occupancy costs start to become excessive and begins to seriously impair a restaurant's ability to generate an adequate profit. So 10%. Now, that's 10% of a restaurant's gross sales. That 10% or 6% directly in rent that gets paid to a landlord, only a portion of that gets paid to the city in real estate taxes. So out of a restaurant's gross sales, the city may only see as little as 1% to 2% of that facility or that business's gross sales coming to the city in revenue. I know personally, speaking for myself, and I know many other food truck owners and operators would agree that paying 10% of our gross sales to operate in the central business district would be well worth it. And we very, very commonly pay upwards of 10% to 15% to set up and provide our services at venues across the county and across the state. So with that, I just ask that you keep in mind the relative scale of these operations and understand that we are more than willing to pay our fair share in exchange for operating on the public right-of-way and consuming the small amount of public services that we do consume. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Edberg.
And I do have a copy of this report, if you're interested.
Yeah, please distribute it to City Clerk Halas, and she'll make sure we get a copy.
And I've also included my contact information.
Oh, perfect. Thank you. Mr. Harrison?
Mayor and Commissioners, Bill Harrison, 2729 Trafford. I must say that I'm appalled at the cavalier attitude of the administration and the majority on this commission regarding the recent restaurant closings. It's not just a business closing. We're talking about people losing their employment and the owners of the business, of course. And then those pesky landlords that everybody thinks are snidely whiplash, they lose their tenants as well. So I just don't appreciate it when people say, "Well, we'll get another restaurant in." Just within the day or so, Modi Mahal, over on Washington, announced they've got signs up that they have closed. Last time I was up here, I started to talk about bicycles and ran out of town. Ran out of time. Yeah, I know you'd like to run me out of town. But I was saying that we need to do something about ordinances for the performance on bicycles. Bicycles need to have lights. People need to wear proper attire. And I'm just tired of these people impeding traffic. If they're going to share the road, they're going to have to behave themselves just as automobiles do. They're going to have to obey the traffic lights, et cetera, et cetera. And they should be subject to ticketing, just like everybody else. You know, if I were to slow down and impede traffic, I'd get a ticket. If I'd run a red light, I'd get a ticket. If I don't have lights on my car at night, I'd get a ticket. And it's just a matter of safety. I can't tell you. Couple of times, I've turned only to see somebody riding a bike, no lights, dark clothing, didn't see him until my headlights hit them. And one guy hollered at me, "Hey, move over," you know? And it's... You couldn't see him. I'm just scared to death that somebody's going to hit one of these people. Moving on to another topic, I submit that smart isn't that smart. I see this in Royal Oak and Southfield as I go to work, where the buses are stopping on the highway, on the streets, just to adjust their schedules so that they stay on schedule. And when I say they're not so smart, in the day of GPSs, there's no reason why they couldn't have a GPS that controls their speed to meet the schedule at the various stops. A moving bus, even though it may be going a little slower, is better than a stopped bus and having everybody stacked up behind them. Again, there should be enforcement. If I were to stop on Woodward Avenue for no reason at all, I'd get a ticket. Bussing. We've heard this from Randall of Sure, that, you know, that instead of bussing, we should be looking at Uber, Lyft, et cetera.
Mr. Harrison, I do need you to finish your final thoughts, sir.
Oh, man, I ran out of time. Anyway, it's door-to-door, instead of curb-to-curb. You could have passes for the elderly, the handicapped, students. It's much safer for students than putting them in with the general public. And again, it would be less cost to the city.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison.
I'll stop.
Thank you, sir. I see a hand here in the corner? Yes, sir.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name's James Campbell. I'm a business owner at 300 East Fourth Street, on the Fourth Street corridor. I'm here to talk a little bit about the food truck issue, but not really about food trucks. What prompted me to come up here was reading the article in the Tribune in which some stakeholders in the city business groups, you know, had expressed their opinion that they did not want food trucks, you know, servicing parts of Royal Oak. For me, it's a non-issue, but I'd like to talk about what it's like being a business on the Fourth Street corridor. As a business owner, I feel like I'm downtown Royal Oak's stepchild. We're not part of the downtown development district, but the area is beginning to develop slowly. And we don't necessarily have a voice for how this is going. I mean, I can come in front of you and talk as the commission... Talk to the commission, you know, as a business owner. But I think that it's important to include the stakeholders along that corridor in how it's going to be developed. And if it takes a business organization to be formed, I'm willing to form it. To lend voice from all the businesses. Today, I'm just one voice. But I occupy a building where... With other businesses that have been in Royal Oak for 20, 25 years. I'm celebrating my 10th year in downtown Royal Oak this year. So I just wanted to express that to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. Mr. Wolf?
Ryan Wolf, 333 North Troy Street.
Ryan Wolfe, 333 North Troy Street. First of all, thank you for Mr. Mayor, thank you for mentioning about Mr. Mayor. That eliminates any confusion. Now...
I need you to help be transparent to the public.
Now, I want to point out that the bus system, let's look at this more closely. Ron Bojey sits on the Board of Bonding, which is a form of taxes in Lansing, and I'm sure it's arranged for a lot of bonding here. Sits on the Board of Transportation, has to do with bussing. Coincidentally, we have sidewalks, which buses need, and then all of a sudden, we have bussing. And then all of a sudden, we have Henry Ford Hospital that probably could use some bussing, so much that Beaumont is concerned and they put their two cents in and wanted to make sure that their outpatient clinic gets advantage of this bussing if it happens. That's why I'm voting against it. Now, I want to also mention this outrageous sidewalk millage. Mr. Johnson did not bother to think that possibly, if he had arranged for seniors, I mean, for those, especially seniors, but for those who were victimized by these humongous sidewalk assessments, to get a refund on what they paid out at the same time the city was going to pass a millage so the sidewalks can be spread out fairly, it would likely have passed. But he didn't, I believe he didn't care. He expects it to be defeated. And of course, presidents don't trust them anymore, and that's why it'll probably be defeated. But Vincetta and other districts, watch out, you're going to get clobbered. The other thing is, as I mentioned, Mr. Bojey and all of these, all you have to do, and the bussing and everything, all you have to do is connect the dots. Oh, yes, Royal Oak Manor. I would like Mr. Vassar, Ms. Gibbs, and Ms. Macy to arrange to put on the agenda bagging the meters. I can see why you guys are passing the buck. Three Commissioners can place an item on the agenda. All Royal Oak Manor needs to do is to have those 18 meters bagged for the next possibly six months. And by attrition, that will relieve a lot of the problems they have. And also, add also to cut in half the fees at the parking structure for these seniors. 99% of them are low income. I would, even more than that, 99.9% are low income. And to treat them this shabbily is outrageous and cruel and unusual. We treat our dogs and cats better. Now, Ferndale, oh, yes. The reason why Royal Oak does turn down Chariot, by the way, is because Chariot offered free rides to its funky Ferndalers to Arts Beats and Eats, which would have put a big dent in our fundraising by charging $15, $20 for parking.
Mr. Wolf, I do need you to put forward your final thoughts, sir.
Have I, I think I said everything I need to say tonight, gentlemen. One thing I want to apologize to Mr. LeBuck and anyone else who suffered personal attacks on the Internet. I don't believe in personal attacks. And so, I just wanted to add that one thing. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wolf. Who's next? Is that Mr. Ashley's hand I see back there?
I'm wearing red today. Alan Nashley, I live at Royal Oak Manor. I want to speak on the Task Force for Seniors and Aging. The first meeting of the Task Force, if I'm not mistaken, was August 29th. The next meeting is November 20th. I was at that first meeting, and the reason why it's like you can't get people to meet at a regular time, mainly one, there's only one person that is a senior, all the rest are under 50. They're all caregivers. They're all working nights. They're all working days. I think the Task Force should be disbanded. And I think the new appointees should be seniors, not people under 40. Because seniors know what seniors need. Caregivers to seniors don't know what seniors need. They don't think like seniors. They don't walk like seniors. They don't act like seniors. To help seniors, the Task Force for Aging has to be seniors acting for seniors. This Task Force is a sham. It should be voted on to be either reappointed or disbanded. It does no good what they're planning for this giant ARP thing. It is ridiculous for this city to meet the standards. I was going to speak on some stuff such as on the buses and on the other stuff, but I'll pass on that. I just want the, this Task Force, I prefer to have this Task Force disbanded and start over with seniors instead of 45-year-olds trying to act like seniors. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ashley. All right, who's next? Yes, I see a hand right there.
Good evening. Janice Wagman, 600 Wellesley. I'm here to talk about two different issues tonight. One is the snow ordinance. I have a problem with the curb ramps being included on that, mainly because we clear them. We pay to have them cleared. Seniors like myself shouldn't or can't do it. And then the snow piles come by three or four days later, whatever it happens to be, and plow it back in again. And so you need some sort of alternate plan for that. Secondly, the removal of ice, I don't know how you remove ice. You can salt it, but if it's a pool of water, how do you remove it? Because it's going to refreeze. And lastly, I find it interesting that the city doesn't, isn't required to meet the same standards as you're requiring of the residents. So transit, I'm trying to figure out exactly what the people are going to vote for. On Facebook, I hear they're basically rewriting what they proposed before. They've extended hours to bar closings. These are different promises that they've put out there. They're extending hours to bar closings, guaranteed rides home, extending routes, bigger buses. And on the senior flyer that they put out, the information was wrong about what's being offered today, and future offers now includes on-demand service for seniors. That's never, ever been presented anywhere in any of these proposals. One of the comments was the seniors, and children need direct pickups from their homes, or in the case of children, school. The answer, this was on Facebook, there's money in the budget for the type of service you described. Again, there's not door-to-door. Basically, you ask for it on Facebook, you get it. We're considering it. We'll be able to do that. There is a slush fund in there, but not for all the things that are being offered. And you, having had Normandy Oaks, the results of Normandy Oaks before, where people were promised things, are going to be slammed if this goes through. With you promised, where's my splash pad? On the city's website, it says it's anticipated the transit system would be operated by SMART. No, the proposal is SMART. Additional funds may come from fares. No, the proposal is you're going to charge fares. The millage will be for a period of five years, not up to. And finally, on the actual ballot, which I got my absentee ballot, it says, this is the language, "Establishing, operating, and maintaining a public transit system in the city of Royal Oak." What is that? What are we voting on? Where's SMART? Where's fixed route? Where's any mention of the Task Force? And where's the $250,000 that was promised to the senior transit? You don't have to include that. If we vote on that, you don't have to give it to them. This is a blank check where afterwards, you can do whatever you want, including eliminating any funding for senior transit. What are we voting on? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wagner. Who's next? Yes, sir, here in the front.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is John Latimer. I live at 4214 Berkshire, up at the north end, where they still shoot buffalo. Anyways, I have a quick question. We were just talking about the sidewalk repairs. Now, over the years, I've probably spent $400, $500 to the city to get those slabs replaced. Now, we've got a millage coming up for again. If it passes, I'm paying twice for the same thing I paid over the last 12 years for. So what kind of benefit does that give me? You know? I mean, obviously, you're not going to give everybody a tax credit. You can't do that. But there's got to be some other way, because every one of my neighbors has been up and down the street saying, "Hey, we got a browbeaten into replacing these things. We could get a contractor," which I am, "to do the work. But we give the money to the city. That way, it goes right there. Your guys come out and it's approved." But since I went ahead and fixed the city's sidewalks, I think I should get some benefit out of it, other than passing another millage to go ahead and put them back again. With that kind of, I could take a sledgehammer and bust them up. Then I would get my benefit out of the millage. You guys could come out and fix it anyways. But I do thank you all very much for this evening, and you guys have a nice day. I have a minute and 50 seconds left, right? I'm going to yield my minute and 50 seconds if anybody wants to come up here and speak.
All right, who's next? Yes, I see a hand in the back.
Clark Campbell, East University of Royal Oak, Mayor, City Commissions, and City Administration. Good evening. Mayor Fournier, actually, I'd love to take advantage of that 150, because I'm actually going to request additional time to speak before I begin. My remarks will require approximately five minutes. I've timed them. And I do now wish to be interrupted at the three-minute mark. So if you would allow me that, I would greatly appreciate it.
Polls in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. I understand and fully support the city's desire to improve our mass transit system, to have a vision and a plan for our city that makes sense. You created a transit task force and instructed them to, quote, "Prepare a local public transit strategy that allows people of all ages and abilities to have transportation independence and to get in and around Royal Oak without a car," end quote. You are now asking the taxpayers of Royal Oak to spend $3 million a year for the next five years on a fixed route bus system. It is not a vision. It is not a forward-thinking plan. It is not the solution. It is expensive to run, inefficient for this purpose, and an outdated approach that does not address our needs. There are reliable public transit systems built on technology available now, and so, much more affordable. Arlington, Texas, has an on-demand ride-sharing system named Via in use today. It merges the Uber model with the concept of shared rides, utilizing technology to maximize the efficiency of getting people around town in transit vans. The Via system operates at a fraction of the cost of a fixed route bus system and does not require any extensive setup charges for items like permanent bus stops or signage. Riders are able to use the system when they want and never have a long wait or a long walk to be picked up. Those who don't have a smartphone can book a ride by calling a phone number. The Arlington Via system currently services a 24-square-mile area. We only need to service a 12-square-mile area. The fact that this type of system was not recommended by our transit task force is a mystery to me. There was a, quote, "zone service," end quote, model listed in the scenarios that SMART worked up a cost estimates on for the city. It was Scenario Six, and sounds very similar to this system. Interestingly enough, however, SMART says such a ride-sharing system would cost somewhere between $3.2 and $3.9 million a year to operate. Really? SMART's price quote is 10 times more than the $300,000 the folks in Arlington, Texas, are paying for theirs. I certainly would like to know how SMART came up with those numbers. They either have no clue about how to run a technology-based ride-sharing system, or they deliberately priced the ride-sharing model so high it would not be considered, or both. The fact that they cannot get their own bus-tracking technology to work reliably tells me that they have no business giving an opinion to others on a technology-based transit system. Did I mention that I am a regular user of mass transit myself? I ride the SMART bus system daily, on a daily basis, to my workplace from Royal Oak to downtown Detroit, and have been doing so for many years. I am very familiar with what SMART's tracking app can and cannot do. It is so cumbersome and unreliable that their own employees recommend using a completely different third-party app called Transit for Bus Tracking. As for SMART actually running a system for the city of Royal Oak, as a longtime customer, I am not impressed with their service. I had high hopes for the new fast bus, a limited-stop system of buses that travel up and down Woodward theoretically every 15 minutes. The buses are new and clean, which is great, and I typically don't have to wait longer than about 30 minutes for a bus. Yes, the same ones that are supposed to come every 15 minutes. The biggest surprise, however, was that these new buses have a major problem with the emergency exit hatch door in the roof of the bus. They do not seal properly, and when it rains, it pours down inside of the bus. Not just a little, a lot. Six of the seats on the bus are unusable when it is raining. Sitting on a wet seat is no fun either. We try to warn people getting on the bus before they sit down. You can see daylight along the edges of the hatch doors, and this is true on different bus numbers I have ridden on. I have reported this problem to SMART directly, including addressing their Board of Directors at a recent meeting and providing them with a video of the water coming down, but they don't appear to be very motivated to correct the problem. Though I have asked for the courtesy of an update, they certainly have not let me know what their plan is to address the issue. In any event, I am here to tell you all that for the city of Royal Oak, a fixed route bus system from SMART is just plain dumb. At $3 million per year, the proposed plan is 10 times more expensive than it needs to be. Technology-driven ride-share systems for cities like ours are available now and at a tenth of the cost. They work very well for getting people around town and have an excellent rider satisfaction rating. As citizens and taxpayers, we deserve better, much better. We deserve a fiscally responsible plan that works.
Mr. Campbell, I do need you to finish your final thoughts, sir.
This fixed route bus system is not it. Please send the transit task force back to do their homework. I will be voting no on the Royal Oak Transit Millage. I encourage you all to do the same. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. All right, who's next?
Timothy Barnes, 507 Forest Avenue. I wanted to speak today first. I wanted to support the gentleman who spoke earlier. We need more enforcement on the bicyclists. I, too, am almost weekly, almost running someone over in dark clothes and no lights. He made a very good point, and I just wanted to add my own two cents. What I've really come up here to say is in support of the food truck ordinance. In fact, I would say it doesn't go far enough. It's a bit too limiting. But as it is written, at least it's a step forward. We can at least see, move forward and see how it actually works for those that it does affect and it can do something for. I've read the Restaurant Association statement on this and their lack of support for it, and I find that that is not really based on anything but very short-sighted thinking. They're just going, somebody's not buying food elsewhere, they're not buying it at our restaurants. The idea is to bring people into the downtown area. Any plan that follows that is a good plan, even if it's for them to come back later. That's why we run events. That's why you guys have done so well with the larger events that we have, including Arts, Beats, and Eats. Of course, there's a lot of other events that you run that serve food. You have a food truck meeting on a regular basis in the farmer's market. The idea is to bring people down here. This is the same thing on a much smaller scale. And it aids some of your current businesses that are here already. I don't see anything possibly bad if you look at other cities, not just Ferndale, but if you Google and look at other cities, there's a lot of information out there about positive effects of this sort of thing. You can continue to limit it, but all things considered, I think moving forward with aiding some businesses that are here would in fact sound better for you, as well as aid all the businesses, as well as the residents. With that in mind, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Barnes. In the far back?
Hello, Royal Oak City Commission, citizens of Royal Oak. I'm from Troy. I'm a bike rider. I'm a web developer. I'm helping...
Can you put your name and...
Oh, I'm, excuse me, yes. Pardon me. My name's Aaron Deluski. I live in Troy. I bike... I live in Troy, I bike from Troy to Detroit. Some folks and I are putting together an art incubator for individuals to participate with, and we're hoping to end poverty. It's our goal. Anyway, so what I'm telling you is I ride through your city, okay? I ride from Troy, Main Street, through your city. And I got a ticket the other day. It's, I got a ticket for riding on the sidewalk, I was fiddling with my phone on the sidewalk instead of being on the road, fiddling with my phone, okay? I didn't want to be on your road, it was, it's dangerous being on the phone with it. It's on the road with a phone, you know? Anyway, I want to point out that these bike lanes out here, I don't even think they should be called bike lanes. I think any bicycling infrastructure should be called trailways. They shouldn't be associated with the road, so folks can wear whatever they want when they go into town, where they don't have to wear fluorescent yellow just to go to the bar. I'm sorry, guys, I'm just pointing it out so people can hear it. I'm not trying to offend anybody, I'm just pointing out the reality of it. And I'm mad, Don Johnson, he told me that it's difficult to develop north-south routes on Main Street because they're already developed, all right? And this summer, the city put in medians and lanes, and my brain said, wait a minute, that was just developed, those weren't there when him and I talked about it, about developing north-south routes. I want to tell you that, you all probably know, because I get up here and talk, I am with Trails Committee in Troy, and there's a gentleman, he's on there, on the committee, and he wants to develop the interurban trailways, the interurban rail lines that used to run to each city throughout here, and one of the rail lines runs through Main. We don't have to ride on these roads, I don't want to ride on the roads, I'm a pro. I mean, just the other day, I rode, or earlier this summer, I rode 200 miles to Bay City for fun. Now, people here, there's probably a small percentage that do that, and these pathways out here, it's built for a small percentage, and it shouldn't be, it should be built for everybody, so everybody can enjoy it, and so I don't have to wear lime-green clothing when I go into town. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Deluski. Okay, who's next? Going once? Yes, sir, in the back. Is that Ed? Lighting's a little tricky back there, it's hard to see.
Mr. Stensel. Hello, my name's Edward Stensel, I live at 111 North Main Street. I'm here to talk in favor of food trucks in Royal Oak. I own a business on East Fourth Street, the River Rouge Brewing Company, and although the current structure or current writing of the ordinance, the way it's being presented to you tonight, I feel like it's very limiting, in fact, it probably won't be able to be used by me, but I think a step forward with, at least starting something with food trucks is a positive step forward. A lot of my patrons, which are residents here in Royal Oak, are constantly asking me why I don't have a food truck every once in a while. Most businesses that do what I do, is a brewery, in other communities such as Ferndale, Detroit, I was just up in Marquette last month, they have a lot of food trucks up there, but they're all over the state, and actually, Grand Rapids has food trucks too, and they went through the same debate about where to put them and how that would affect the brick-and-mortar, and what they did was they found places, corridors, such as Fourth Street, places that weren't being served by restaurants, and they basically designated them as food truck zones on certain days of the week, limited it, but allowed it, and I think that we need to look at that and do something similar here in Royal Oak. So that's basically all I have to say, I'm gonna keep it short, I've got 1:25. Thank you all for your time. Bye.
Thank you, Mr. Stensel. Anybody else here to speak tonight at public comment? Going once, going twice. All right, we're gonna bring the meeting back up here to this side of the table, which brings us to item number six, which is the approval of the agenda. Commissioner LaVassar.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner LaVassar, second by Commissioner Douglas. Discussion? All right, with none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion passes, we have an agenda, which brings us to item number seven, which is the consent agenda. Are there any items that anyone wishes to pull off to discuss independently from the consent agenda? Okay, well, the consent agenda includes claims from September 28th and October 9th, 2018, approval of purchase orders, declaration disposal of surplus property, Finance Department request to fill vacancy, appointments of the Royal Oak Hospital Authority, designation of nonprofit status rocking for a match, approval of a special event permit, 360 Event Productions Royal Oak Spooktacular, contract modification to Contract S 1801 2018 Sewer Televising and Root Treatment, approval of the 2019 Michigan Department of Transportation Annual Permit, Standard Resolution One for Special Assessment Paving Massot Avenue, receive and file the following items, non-action items, which includes just the September 2018 investment report. That's our consent agenda. Is there a motion? Commissioner Perush?
I move approve all of this.
Motion by Commissioner Perush, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Dubach, is there any discussion? All right, with none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Which brings us to item number eight, the approval of special event permit, Mr. B's Gastropub Fall Celebration. D.C. Frazier?
Thank you, Mayor, City Commission. Mr. B's has submitted, excuse me, a special event permit for October 20th from noon until 10:30 PM. Included in the special event permit, they will close the alley behind their business, they're behind Mr. B's, between Second and Third. There'll be entryways into that area, both at Second and at Third Street. They just want to have a kind of a family fun event there, so people of all ages will be allowed in there, but alcohol will also be served in the area, so they'll use a wristband type of arrangement for anybody over 21. The businesses that back up to that, or front that alley, Potaya, Mr. B's, Brugers, Beirut Palace, as well as Comet Burger, will also set up tents in the alley. Each tent will be no larger than 10 by 10, so they would not require any special permission from the Building Department, but they'll all be behind the business in the alley, they'll be selling only their own goods in that alley, and there'll be no cooking from the alley, everything that will be supplied out in the alley will be brought from the restaurants or businesses. They're applying for an outdoor service permit to serve just beer and wine. They'll have games and events for the children, including a pumpkin decorating contest, pumpkin bowling, a bounce house, and face painting, as well as they're going to project the MSU U of M game that starts at noon on the wall of the law office there at Third and Main Street. Police Department does not see any issues with this special event permit.
Okay, do we have any questions for Deputy Chief Frazier? As usual, excellent work, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, well, maybe the petitioner, Chef Johnny? Very critical question, since this is happening on October 20th, who do you support? Fine game, it could sway a few members here one way or the other.
I have to be careful with that in this town, I know. Well, you know, it was really wonderful that they were able to put the decorative concrete behind our building back there, and the whole concept behind that is to create kind of an active area that we could create attractions for, to bring people to our businesses and to our city. So I've been, you know, a strong advocate of that for quite a long time, and I was very appreciative that Boji paid to put that pavement in, and now that it's there, it looks beautiful, but we need to do something with it. So I put in a special event permit, and this is being put in by me just because there isn't really necessarily an association, there isn't any leadership group right now, but I do have consents and participation from Brugers, from Beirut, from Potaya, from all the businesses on that area are gonna participate in this event. And the idea is to, you know, start having events. This is gonna be the day of the Michigan, Michigan State game, so I think it'll be somewhat of a tailgate. There will be a lot of activities for the kids, and hopefully, we can put some PR behind this and, you know, start to identify, create an identity around it. I think we're gonna brand it The Rock Way, not that anybody gave us permission to do that, but I don't think anybody else is working on it. So we're gonna try to put some PR behind this and to, hopefully, this will be the first in a series of events. I'd like to, and I've been investigating the idea of doing kind of a festival of lights for the holidays, where people could walk or maybe drive up and down a really nice holiday lighting scheme and make that an attraction. I could see Ice Sculpture Event there in February. There's a whole list of events that I think that would really be nice to have back there and that we could create attractions, bring people in the city and help generate revenue for our businesses, you know, particularly as we're going through this construction period, because it's pretty brutal. The construction is, and I don't know if it's just the construction, I think the overall town restaurants are down, you know, 20% to 30% right now, and it's a challenging business environment for us. So anything we can do to bring people in town and to get them to frequent our businesses is probably a positive thing, and that's why I'm really supporting this right now.
Any questions? Commissioner Macy?
I don't get it, what's The Rock Way? Why?
Well, the original was the Royal Oak City Center, that was what they were naming The Rock.
Oh, okay.
And they have a, they have a, well, they have a walkway downtown called The Beltway. And it's just, you know, if we're gonna market it, we have to brand it somehow.
Okay, so you mean R O C C, Rock?
Yeah.
Right, exactly, R O C C, Royal Oak City Center Way, yeah.
You can rock and stroll there, too. Sorry. I got three more bad jokes left, and I'm out, I promise.
I have also a totally unrelated question. Is one of the dumpsters that's on Third Street still, is that yours, Mr. B's dumpster?
Pardon me?
The dumpster on Third Street, is that still yours, Mr. B., or is that behind your restaurant now?
You know, I can't honestly tell you, I know that right this minute, what they're doing, you know, the way they built the sidewalk, there's a 10-inch ledge that doesn't allow trucks to get to the dumpster that wasn't there before. So there's a problem. And my manager actually came up with a great idea. They're switching the dumpster into the other garage, so we're switching garages so that the truck can get to the dumpster. I'm just not sure if that's happened or not yet.
Okay, well, that answers my question about dumpsters on The Rock Way, like what's gonna happen back there?
Yeah, no, they're moving it so that it's on the area where the sidewalk is flat to the ground, so the truck can get to it, so we don't ever have to put it on the sidewalk. It's not realistic that they're gonna pull that dumpster out every week and put it back, it's not really gonna happen, so.
Okay, well, this event sounds great.
Yeah.
I have 45 soccer games that day, but after those 45 soccer games, I hope to be there.
Mr. Johnson, you have a question?
A couple of comments. First, I want to add administration's support for the event. We think the more things that go on in that alley, the better.
More positive things that go on in the alley.
Yes, yes. It's like this, we think would be great for the alley. I didn't plan on introducing this yet at this point, but we have been discussing a branding proposal for that alley, and that's not the name that we're going to be submitting. Reason being is that originally, that building was going to be called The Rock, but with a single tenant occupying it, it's gonna be the Henry Ford Building, there isn't a chance in the world that they're gonna call it The Rock.
If you guys got a name for us, please let us know, so we can put it in our marketing materials.
The one that we're favoring right now, but ultimately, it's gotta come to the commission, is The Row.
Is the what?
The Row.
Row what? I like it.
Royal Oak Way.
Ah, good, I thought you were talking about Fish Row, I was like, that's kind of a weird name. The Row, R-O-W. That's a joke, by the way. Royal Oak Way, like it.
Works.
Any other questions? Commissioner Dubach?
Yeah, Chef Johnny, I just want to say, you know, throughout this whole process and other constructions where, if you've remained positive and you're being a visionary leader in that area, and now utilizing this revitalized public space while we're still mid-construction, I think is a testament to, you know, your innovation as a business owner, and I'm really appreciative that you're pulling other businesses into this, and we're willing to do whatever we can do to help you be successful in this endeavor. So I think it sounds awesome, and if we do not actually go to East Lansing to tell you, well, my family and I will definitely be there.
Great, well, thank you very much, I appreciate that.
But with that, I'm happy to move for approval.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Dubach, is there a second?
Second by Commissioner Macy, I think I saw quick to the gun.
Discussion? Commissioner Douglas?
I'd just add my congratulations to those of Commissioner Dubach. It's nice to see a private business owner not waiting for someone else to fix things or to take action, not waiting on the DDA or the city, but actually moving forward in a positive way on their own initiative to bring some nice things to our city. I just really appreciate your overall positive attitude, thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Yeah, Johnny, you have some amazing things, not just with your menu, which I had that shrimp salad the second time I came back, it was fantastic, my wife loved it, too. You know, you've taken every opportunity with your speakeasy downstairs to put in the arcade in, and this is just underscores the type of, you know, can-do attitude and bring everyone together and be a community leader, not just, you know, behind the scenes waiting for customers. So this is great, and I can tell you that the fact that you're targeting and making it a family event is amazing. We all reminisce about, last summer, we had shut down Main Street, and the families, the feedback we got from families and people of all walks of life, from empty nesters to young kids, was very, very positive, and I think that energy is certainly gonna carry forward as, you know, we bring people to that newfound space, and certainly with your leadership and support, we're gonna be able to do that, so thank you.
My pleasure, thank you very much.
All right, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, motion passes, we got a permit, we'll see you on October 20th.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
All right, this brings us to item number nine, the Planning Commission Recommendation Zoning Ordinance Text Amendments for Food Trucks. So I think we brought this one back from the last meeting. Is Mr. Twing here? I don't know if there's anything new to add from the, maybe a quick 30-second summary for the commission?
Yes, it was at your prior meeting, and it was on a consent agenda, the commission decided to hold it over to tonight's meeting. The Planning Commission recommendation is to reject the amendment, so you'll see that resolution in there, in your commission letter. The Planning Commission did discuss it, I'm gonna say at least three meetings as they went through it. You should also have copies of all the letters or emails, communications of support for revisions, as well as letters of opposition to the text amendment. Very briefly, the zoning ordinance currently has wording in it regarding transient merchants, which are treated as temporary activities. They are not allowed in the central business district. Transient merchants are allowed in the commercial districts outside of downtown Woodward Avenue, some of the mileroads. Food trucks were treated as transient merchants under the current ordinance. Staff was directed to put something together that would allow food trucks specifically in the CBD under certain parameters, and that's why you'll see us separating them in the definition as well as the activity, so that not every other type of transient merchant might be allowed in the CBD. Things like outside flower sales, fireworks sales, auto repair glass, chip window things are all under transient merchant-type operations. So with that, the recommendation is, from the Planning Commission, is to reject the proposed text amendment.
Any questions for Mr. Twing? Any questions for Mr. Twing? Commissioner LaBassar?
There, there was a few comments in some of the letters talking about perhaps someone that wanted to do this, obtaining a special event permit and I just want to get a sense of what that process is cost-wise, timing-wise, you know, how flexible or rigid that process is.
And if this passes?
No, I mean, a, as an alternative, there, there was some, some people comment, commenting, providing their opposition to this proposal saying, rather than change this ordinance, they, they were suggesting that people that want to have food trucks should apply for special event permits. And I wanted to get a sense for how this differs and what that process is and cost is.
Well, the special event permit is handled through the police department. You've just dealt with one. The special event is an activity that's outside of most city codes, including the zoning ordinance. The entire Dream Cruise is basically a series of several hundred special events that they apply for because they don't comply with the zoning ordinance in any fashion. So, it's a special event that occurs on a limited basis in terms of the police department review under the, the special event ordinance. And food trucks could, could fall under that as well as other things that some business wanted to have a special event. Transient merchants, on the other hand, once an, and/or the food truck operation would go through a special land use approval if this were adopted in front of the Planning Commission. They would have to submit a site plan, a detailed site plan showing compliance with the ordinance provisions or go get a variance from the zoning board of appeals. Once that's granted, they can run it whenever they would like. It's not a request that would come back for additional review under a special event permit on a regular basis. It would simply, they could leave it and let it run year-round as they saw fit with seasonal activities like the example as transient merchants go from flower sales to pumpkin sales to Christmas tree sales. They just change what they're selling. But the overall area and operation that they're allowed in occurs every year without further board approval. So, it's more of a granting of something on a permanent basis as a transient merchant.
So, that's something that would go through the Planning Commission and then the City Commission?
Well, no, the City Commission would not see, they don't see transient merchants. It, it ends at the Planning Commission, whether they'd grant it or not.
So, if the Planning Commission denies it, it doesn't get here either?
Even if they approve it, it wouldn't get here. If they, if they deny the special land use permit, you wouldn't see it. If they approved it, the City Commission wouldn't see it.
Okay, so, so that's one alternative is to seek that special land use through the Planning Commission?
Well, that's while this transient merchant would, would fall, would flow through. That's what this is setting it up for on private property. The other option is the special event permit.
Let, let me make sure I understand. You're saying if this, if, if this ordinance were adopted, that you would expect that applicants would still have to apply to the Planning Commission for that special land use?
Yes.
Commissioner Macy?
I heard the gentleman from River Rouge say he's not even sure that this ordinance would cover his business and my understanding was that, from some of the things that we read, was that it seems to be mostly targeting this, this Fourth Street, Fourth Avenue corridor and I'm wondering, do we know what businesses would be covered by this, would be able to host a food truck based on this?
No, we haven't evaluated individual sites for compliance with the provisions, so I, I can't tell you they would or they wouldn't. It was discussed in terms of what types of, of provisions we would want them to have through the Planning Commission. If a property complies today and they go through the process and get an approval, that's fine. It's possible that a current property in the future, or a property currently doesn't comply and they change something so they come in compliance. Or, as I said, they could potentially seek a variance from the zoning board if the Planning Commission allowed them to go get that variance.
Okay, because it seemed like some of the concern was that this would spread beyond that corridor into the, more into the central business district and I was just wondering, from reading it, it doesn't seem like a lot of the properties in the central business district would be able to host this even if it were permitted.
Well, I think probably one of the most limiting ones is the requirement for a liquor license without kitchen facilities. I don't think there are very many of those currently and if the City Commission would have to grant a liquor license to a facility without kitchen facilities in order for that to populate, that's probably one of the most limiting ones. The other ones, the petitioner could change the site to come in compliance, but they'd have to get that license first.
Okay. I can give a question. I can't remember what the question was.
Just for clarity, too, this is dealing with food trucks on private property. Under no circumstances is this going to allow food trucks in a public right-of-way or on public property.
Oh, I have another question.
You have another question?
Okay. So, it seemed like another, both, there was some very strongly worded opposition to this and they seem to be repeating that it's, right now it's a very difficult time. There's construction, the parking is restricted, this is not a great time for this. Did you get the sense that, that the timing is the major problem in this or was that just an excuse for one of them?
No, I, as I've indicated previously, I think the central business district has a different character to it. We don't allow auto-type operations in the CBD. You won't see drive-throughs, you won't see auto repair facilities. So, anything that's auto-related has, has been specifically prohibited. Also, there's been, if you look at vendors and peddlers, there's been resistance to those occurring on the sidewalks. So, it's not just food trucks, it's certain types of land use, business uses. And that's been true my entire career here. So, I don't, I don't think it's just the current operation. I think it's a pretty standard reply from existing businesses and restaurants and things in the downtown.
I have a question for Mr. Gillum, or maybe for Mr. Twing, I don't know. Is it possible to restrict this to a certain location? Like, was it possible to restrict it to Fourth Street or would it have to be the whole district if we wanted to do this?
Potentially you could define it. You'd, there'd have to be some findings and I would think maybe some additional study done to justify why the use would be limited or restricted to that particular area, but it, it could be possible.
In the event that, you know, it, I mean, in my opinion, this seems very limited in terms of scope, where these could possibly pop up, there wouldn't be a tremendous amount of proliferation. But in the event that, you know, this passes and something were to happen, a food truck were to go in place a few times a month seasonally on Fourth Street, to unwind that, let's just say this commission all of a sudden had attracted an entire crowd of hungry, french fry, craving hooligans and created mass chaos in the Fourth Street corridor, the commission would have, or at least the city, would have the ability to not renew that food truck for that particular establishment, if I'm not mistaken, right? Or the Planning Commission?
I, I think the unwinding of a special land use approval is much more difficult than the unwinding of a business license. You have to show that what you granted under a special land use permit is being violated and it's being violated by the operation, not, you've, you've got some grandfather clauses once you've approved something that can continue. The burden, I think, shifts a little bit where if a business license that's renewed annually, there's a problem, you just don't have to renew it the next year. It's a little different with the special land use permit.
But it is possible. It's not?
It's possible, but it's, it's, it's difficult.
Commissioner Perusch?
Well, Mr. Gillum might be getting ready to say essentially the same thing, but when you grant a special land use permit, you're granting a property right and that's, it's a limited property right, significantly more limited than a lot of other property rights that are granted, like a zoning variance or a zoning change. But it is a property right and so Mr. Twing is correct when he says that's much more difficult to justify taking that away. Much, much more difficult. You have to find really extensive and clear violation of the terms of that special land use permit and be able to, to justify it with evidence before you can say, okay, you're violating the terms, therefore we're taking it away. And it's because it's the nature, the nature of it is that it is a property right. There's some value to that, there's some monetary value to that and it's, it's, a license can either be limited by its terms or, you know, you mess up with a license, it can get yanked, you know, with certain notices. It's not a property right, it's a permission slip and that's, that's a significant difference. So, if you had a bad actor under a special land use permit, the bottom line is it would be a lot more difficult to get rid of it.
That was largely, those were largely the comments that I was going to, going to make, Commissioner, that from the, the city's standpoint, one of the things that's attractive about the special land use approval process is that the Planning Commission could put specific conditions on the special land use. So, in terms of trying to revoke or terminate a special land use, the devil is in the details.
Right.
You have to be specific and clearly define what the conditions are and then if the conditions aren't met, you have to be able to establish that as a basis for revoking the special land use approval.
Right. Commissioner LaBassar?
I wanted to ask Mr. Gillum some questions to follow up on what Mr. Twing said. Do you concur with Mr. Twing as far as the role the Planning Commission plays in the approval or disapproval of the special land use to utilize a food truck? Do you believe it's that process or do you believe it might be a little different as this ordinance is written?
No, the way the zoning ordinance is written, all special land uses, the final say rests with the Planning Commission. So, special land use decisions and determinations did not come to the City Commission and they wouldn't for food trucks if this ordinance amendment was approved.
Is there a particular criteria that the Planning Commission needs to consider or is it, you know, how arbitrary or how much can be a matter of personal preference for the members there? Or do they have to follow a set, set line of, of rules to deny such a request?
Well, there are standards that are set forth for the, for the approval of a special land use and if, if those criteria have to be relied upon in evaluating the special land use, whether you're approving it or whether you're denying it, either one. So, no, a decision can't be completely arbitrary or capricious.
Okay. Now, now there's a, another aspect to this, which I, I believe has to do with the plan of operation for the liquor licensee. That's another aspect that would, would need to be amended and considered at some point?
Well, any establishment that's going to be furnishing alcohol for consumption on the premises in the city does have to have an approved plan of operation and that is something that's approved by the City Commission. So, that would be the City Commission's purview, that aspect of it.
So, so anyone that wants to incorporate food trucks into their plan of operation, that would be an amendment to the plan of operation. It would come before this body, before it's approved.
That's correct.
Right. And that would be something separate from the, the approval of the Planning Commission?
Yeah, the liquor licensing itself is a requirement of the proposed special land use under this ordinance amendment, but it would be a separate process.
Is, is there a possibility to try this on a temporary basis, perhaps put a sunset clause in the ordinance so that, I mean, there was concern of creating a property right, but if the ordinance included a sunset clause, would that address that concern?
Well, that would address the concern in the consent, in the sense of future applications, but I don't think you could, you could grant a special land use approval for a period of one year or two years or something like that. Either you grant the special land use approval or you don't, one or the other. So, I don't think a sunset, a sunset clause wouldn't specifically address existing licenses, if you will.
Okay. What about with regard to the business's plan of operation? Can you approach it in that fashion?
Well, again, you're talking, very clearly in the case of a liquor license, you're talking about a property interest. So, if, if a license was granted based upon a specific plan of operation that included a food truck operation, no, I think there would have to be some kind of cause to be able to go back and require that plan of operation to be amended to exclude the food trucks in the future.
Mr. Gillum, if I may interrupt Commissioner LaBassar real quick, I know in the past we would grant ironically liquor licenses to establishments, that we would put provisions in there to say, okay, in six months, a year, if you have, you know, positive recommendation from the police department that there's no issues, then we'll come back and revisit this and extend your hours or do whatever. Is that, you know, maybe in a similar vein of questioning Commissioner LaBassar that you have?
I mean, maybe as a condition of an initial approval if that's something the licensee was willing to accept.
Okay. For their plan of operation?
Yeah.
Because they'd have to change it anyways.
Correct.
Sorry, Commissioner LaBassar, I just wanted to, at some point, you spend enough time at this table, you remember things.
I appreciate the extra insight and getting to the point. I, I just wanted to go through a couple of the provisions here. I'm looking at page three out of five of the materials and the section dealing with screening, which is 770-69A, and just wanted to get a sense of what's required here with regard to screening a property where there's a food truck.
Which section were you looking at again, please?
It's, it's, it's middle of page three of the materials. It's page three of five, this will be of the attachment. It's section 770-69.
69.
And then it's, letter A is the section that seems to deal with screening.
Thanks.
So, that's screening and, and there may be some language in here about setbacks as well, or that may be a different section. But, but just trying to get a sense of, you know, what that requires and, and get a sense of whether that resolves any concerns we have or if it creates an unreasonable burden for potential applicants who want to make use of other property.
Well, normally, normally the review through the Planning Commission is part of the site plan. They have discretion in terms of, of the outsour screening and it's done on a site-by-site basis because each site is different, rather than having a hard and fast rule that then they have to go get appealed as part of this submission. If the Planning Commission approved the special land use permit and said it was okay, then they would review a site plan for where the food truck was actually going to sit on the site, how they would get food service to and from the site, and they could impose various conditions.
My, my concern in just kind of glancing at this, it was like, okay, do we have to, would an applicant need to install trees on a temporary basis, which would obviously be absurd and just concerned whether that is what the ordinance.
It, it could be they would put in planters with things in it that provided discreet and it could be a permanent wall or a fence. It could be a variety of things as part of that review and approval. And if they, whether they had to take them out or put them back in every time they operated, if that was a condition to the approval, then yes, that's what we'd want to see.
And then I'm turning to the next page. I, I put stars next to paragraph seven and paragraph nine. I believe we already addressed paragraph nine. That's the paragraph nine, I believe we already addressed paragraph nine, that's the plan of operation we already discussed, but the, the number seven, and just get a sense of what that means in this context. Obviously, if you have a liquor licensee with a brick and mortar, they're gonna have electrical service there, are you anticipating that there would be some hookup for electrical service other than what's provided for by, by that brick and mortar?
Well, I, I think what we were looking at from a potential code standpoint is not to have additional lines or things that might be across the site, so it should be self-contained in the food truck.
You, you mean no external hookup to the brick and mortar?
Yeah, it's an onboard generator or something that they're providing their own, rather than bringing in a generator and plugging into it and having cords all over the site.
And then finally, the last couple paragraphs, bottom of page four, top of page five, I wanted to make sure I understood what the parking implications are, as, as we're discussing here. If this is somehow changing what would be required.
Well, since we separated transient merchants and food trucks, we had to come up with a parking requirement in that section of the ordinance. In the CBD, they won't be required to have parking. So, along Fourth Street, they wouldn't add any parking.
I had one follow-up question, and it's in section A, 770-69A. It says, where outdoor displays abut residentially zoned property, is there anything at the, on Fourth Street, up in that, in that area that is residentially zoned? So, which would require the screening?
Uh, well, does he be?
Or which, which would make the screening a requirement? Let me rephrase that.
There is residential zoning along the properties south of Fourth Street.
East of Knowles, like behind the brewery, that's, those are all houses. Turns residential, the other half of the block. Okay.
Which all have screening, I think, anyways, in their back lots, like cement walls?
Yeah, there's walls back there. I was specifically thinking of Motor City Distillery, because I, I was in the back, I don't usually walk around the alleys of restaurants or serving establishments, but I didn't see any residential areas, so I was trying to figure out.
I think you're right, on the north side, you don't really have any.
Yeah, there is none on the north side.
You're right. On the south side, you, I live in the neighborhood, so you got kind of rows of businesses, I think most of them have.
Okay.
Like cinder block or tall fences or something already screening the properties, and whether those are owned by the residences or the businesses, I'm unsure, but, yeah, because they have parking lots and stuff that abutted and so.
Okay, I, I didn't recall, see any, any, but, some of the businesses look very similar to houses, so that could be part of the problem, too.
Commissioner Douglas.
Yeah, I would just bear in mind that this is an ordinance not just about food trucks in, you know, CBD zoning, but about temporary and transient outdoor sales around the city. So, this section, the section A, could apply to somebody with a food truck up on Woodward in a parking lot, where you do have residential nearby, it's not just in the, in the downtown.
Good point. Commissioner Dubac.
I think to Commissioner Douglas's point, that's my primary concern here is that, you know, we're kind of messing with an ordinance to solve a problem for a couple of specific businesses at a couple, at a specific point in time. And while I'm a huge fan of, of those businesses that could potentially benefit from it, we changed the law, and we don't know how other future users might apply it in ways that we haven't expected or anticipated, and so I'm not sure that's the best way to go about public policy. I mean, I think the food truck discussion, it needs to happen, I think it's, it's a trend that people are really, really turned on to, as we've seen with the huge success of our food truck rallies at, at the farmer's market, and I think that's meeting the demand somewhat. The concerns over protecting existing businesses, I, I just don't know, I think that's apples and oranges, right? I feel like, you know, McDonald's is not competing with Bistro eighty-two, they, they both sell food, but they're not, they're not really in the same business, right? And I don't see it that way, and I see that with the food trucks. It, it seems like apples and oranges, it feels like there's demand that's not being met by the food trucks. And, and there's certainly, you know, some businesses could benefit from them, but I feel like the way that this is being approached is fraught with unintended, the potential for unintended consequences, and it doesn't seem like the right way to go about it. And it doesn't address my primary concern about the food trucks in general, which a lot of our business owners do raise, which is, you know, if we're doing business in a downtown like ours, you know, there, there is kind of a cost of entry, our, our businesses and our property owners pay taxes, you know, for the police protection and infrastructure that supports the crowds that come down here and, and supports their ability to sell their products. And, you know, food truck's a transient entity that really doesn't have any skin in the game that can parachute in during busy times and, and, and make money, which is great, businesses should make money, but then leave without any real connection or paying to support the infrastructure that allows for the crowds that allow them to do business and, and make good money. And, and I feel like that, that's not being addressed here, so I feel like this is changing the law to address the need of, of a couple of particular businesses. If that was all that was gonna happen, was like these two businesses, we're gonna utilize it, great, but we're changing the law, and, and that, that doesn't seem like good public policy to me, so. I think, you know, where I'm at right now is, I think we need to support the planning commission's recommendation to deny the changes. Is that where we're at? Like, this is what's in front of us, is whether or not we accept the planning commission's recommendation, correct? To deny.
Yep.
Okay. Honestly, I, I think there's a lot more to discuss in the food truck sphere, but this proposal, I think, is, it's too specific, it's too, we're trying to fine tune ordinance to fit a very, fix a very specific problem, and it's, it's too big a change with too narrow a scope.
So, you know, maybe I can at least give you my perspective on it. You know, maybe starting with the latter, as far as the tax argument, the brick and mortar argument. You know, if this becomes a sort of a landright issue, or, you know, goes with the land, part and parcel, in an indirect way, that land becomes more valuable, has a higher taxable value, and the owners of whoever get this, you know, variance through the planning commission would, or not variance, would get this permission through the planning commission, would in fact, you know, be paying because of this feature option that would be granted with the property. So, there is an argument to be made to say, okay, well, the taxes of the establishments who qualify for this, who apply for it, would in fact, the value of the property would go up, and they would be paying. Like Commissioner Perusch said, if it, if you have this right, your property's worth more theoretically. The complexity of it, I mean, when I look at this, there's, there's, you know, one, we don't have an ordinance today that even calls out food trucks separately, so a big part of this is to say, okay, food trucks are different from somebody selling fireworks or Christmas trees, et cetera. And, you know, at a 10,000-foot level, it is a little clunky, because that's the way we have to operate when it comes to our ordinances. We don't, in my opinion, want to see a proliferation of food trucks in our downtown and, you know, unilaterally change everything without restrictions, because that could have the opposite problem, and you can't unwind it from there. I think this provides us an opportunity to make some changes to the ordinance, allow us to see what food trucks look like in a particular geography outside the downtown, what those impacts are, without worrying about, you know, a complete open floodgate and, and having unintended consequences. So, I argue this actually prevents, or at least allows us to get an experience curve with food trucks in an area that, you know, both the businesses in that area, all of them, or some of them, or two of them, and the residents that live in that area, and the people that patronize these businesses in the neighborhood, individuals that have sent us, you know, letters supporting it, to give it an opportunity for us to, to try it. You have to have the restrictions in here, unless you want to open it up and open up the floodgates, and then you have the unintended consequences. Although I will admit, it's a little ironic, because most of the time we've spent up here, Commissioner Douglas, Commissioner Perusch, Commissioner Dubac, we've had restaurants, food establishments asking for liquor licenses, and that's always been the great debate, and now, in an ironic turn, it's a position where folks with liquor license could potentially be asking for food. Kind of a flip 180. So, you know, to me, I, I don't know that there are easy options, I think our staff did the best they could to really put together a proposal that was petitioned by some folks in the, in the neighborhood and in, in, in the Fourth Street corridor to say, hey, look, we don't want to have a lot of proliferation, we think it fits this area that really has limited dining options, you know, places here that, I mean, this is written, if you're serving liquor, you know, there's a food option for people that might need a bite to eat to settle their stomachs before they walk home, et cetera, for safety reasons, you name it. And I think this, although it's a, I, I won't say clunky, it is an ordinance, and, and these are the modifications that, you know, best achieve that. Limiting it, limiting it to a specific geography and doing some other things from a permit basis are, can be burdensome, and they can be, you know, challenged, so that's where my head's at, I'm gonna, I mean, if someone makes a motion, I'll be supporting it, because I think, you know, at a 10,000-foot level, at a very high level, residents, people that patronize Fourth Street would like to see an option, there's a very limited scope here to places that serve alcohol, they can't be done, can't, food trucks can't come to any public space, no public property, no public parking spots. I, I don't see, I, I see this as a recipe to limit and mitigate unintended consequences related to food trucks, and for us to get an experience curve, so if we want to have that conversation, we'll have some experience under our belt to see how the city should best handle it, because there is a growing demand for these things. Commissioner Douglas.
I, as a member of the planning commission, I will share some of the comments that came at our meeting. Commissioner Dubac has already articulated a couple of them. Actually, I'm gonna just start by making a motion to support the planning commission's decision and reject these ordinance revisions.
Commission, we have a motion by Commissioner Douglas, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Perusch?
Again, Commissioner Dubac, I, I got my notes right here, unintended consequences. I, when I look at a map, I look behind the, this row of businesses, and I see parking lots, I see a property owned by Motor City Gas, I see some underutilized buildings, and actually, I can see how that block might become a distillery district. And let me say this, I love what Motor City Gas is doing, they're bringing people to our town, they've tapped into a trend in America, a culinary trend that supports locally sourced alcoholic beverages, craft beverages, beer and spirits. And I look at this area, and I think, you know, that could be the distillery district with food trucks. And I might support that, but that's not what we're talking about here right now. And what we don't have is the support of, or even information from the, from economic development leaders. Our downtown development authority proposes this, does not support this ordinance, the Chamber of Commerce does not support it, I'll put aside the fact that the restaurant association does not support it, they have certain vested interests in not supporting it. We haven't really heard from our economic development staff with the city as to what the implications of this might be, if there are ways that we can maximize or expand on it and can allow food trucks. I'm very interested in having a food truck discussion, I think other cities bring them into their downtowns in ways that do not negatively affect business, but that's not what this ordinance is, as Commissioner Dubac points out, it really benefits one business, and I just don't think that's good public policy.
Commissioner Dubac.
Yeah, I guess one more note I have on this is that, you know, so I work, my day job is downtown, near Campus Marshes, and there's a whole food truck row there, and it's always busy, but then there's also lines at every restaurant, and that's what happens when you have thousands of daytime workers in one space. And as we've made very clear over the last couple of years, it's been a goal of this commission, which is why we have the office buildings coming in. So, once we have, you know, these 1,800, 2,200 daytime office workers here, I think that maybe is an appropriate time, when we see how that impacts our local economy, whether the daytime foot traffic has been our long-term strategy, that seems like an appropriate time to see what we can add to the mix and have this conversation then, as opposed to, you know, trying to spot fix, you know, in one particular area of town for a couple of specific businesses in a very unique circumstance, talking about the food truck ordinance, the context of our evolving economy, particularly around daytime workers. Because there is a way for restaurants and food trucks to coexist, it's a proven model where they can complement each other, but I feel like it's something that's on the horizon for us, and I think this approach is, it's incomplete, you know, unintended consequences, and, and I think a more holistic discussion can be had, you know, a year from now.
Commissioner Perusch.
Three things. First of all, I'm gonna disagree with you that the addition of a food truck on a piece of property would enhance the value and therefore would generate more tax revenue. I just don't think that that would occur. If this were a fixture that were gonna be permanently attached to the property, like other fixtures become permanently attached, then yes, that boosts the value of the property. This doesn't, this is a temporary installation of something that is not permanent, that can roll away. So, I don't think that in terms of an assessment increase, that you're going to see that happening on a property like this. Secondly, I know that the, the restaurant owners have a vested interest in, in this, but they rightly or wrongly, right now, are feeling a little under siege, and I just don't think that this is the, the right time, in terms of what is going on in the downtown area, to impose yet another concern on their shoulders. Whether or not it would significantly impact sales to them, I, I don't know, but they would be worried about it, and I don't think, right at this point in time, they need something else to worry about. The third thing is, is that this is, the whole eating, drinking in the downtown milieu is constantly changing. It's different every summer, it's different every season, it's different every year, it's different now than it was last year, and it's certainly different now than it was five years ago or 10 years ago. And I think we need to revisit this, I don't think we need to say, no, this can never happen in our downtown, we're just gonna forget about it. But I think after the construction is finished, and Henry Ford has moved in, and we get a sense of what, how this is all gonna work, and how this is all going to operate in terms of traffic and people coming in and so on during the day, during the evening, that would be the time to revisit this issue, because I think that the, the concept has some value, I really do. And I, the, the business operators that we're talking about here are superb business owners, I mean, we, we just know that. But I, I just don't think this is the right time, and as Commissioner Douglas says, I think when we do come back to this issue, hopefully, when the construction is all done, we can take a little bit of a broader look at this whole issue in terms of how it might impact other areas in the city, other economic development impacts, positive and negative, we can, we can understand at that point in time. I, I just don't think that this is the time to, to move forward with this, so that's why I seconded the motion to uphold the plan commission's decision to say no to this right now.
Commissioner Levasseur.
This is an idea that I think warrants some experimenting with, and, and I, I would certainly like to, to see if city staff has some perspective of how we can experiment with it without the unintended consequences or opening a, a door where you can't get the cow back in the, in the barn, that sort of thing. I, I don't see this as competing with our existing restaurants, I'm not sure that that really should be our consideration. Anyway, it should really be about, are, are we providing value for the, for the community? Are we providing something that's gonna enhance the community, or are we providing something that's not gonna cause any public health issues or public safety issues? And, and I, I do believe it warrants some further review, whether it's to go with the option where we send it back to the planning commission to review and consider some of the, the concerns that we have, or we simply were to pass this on a first reading and open it up for hearing and have some further discussion at that second hearing, that I believe that would be the more appropriate thing to do, rather than simply kill it now and not have anything, any action happening on it.
Commissioner Macy.
It's been a great discussion, I've learned a lot and had a lot, had my mind changed about nine times. I think I mostly echo what Commissioner Perusch was saying about the timing just being off, and also the concerns of our people who we task with looking at this, and that everyone uses the word vehement in their opposition, which seems like a very strong word to use about this, but I also agree with whatever. word to use about this. But I also agree with what everyone set up here, is that it seems like this is an idea whose time is coming, and we need to be considering it probably sooner rather than later. And I think I like Commissioner LaVassar's idea about looking at this on a temporary basis and seeing how we could get it to work. And I also just, I had a question for Commissioner Douglas, if she was willing to answer. I mean, so, what you said was very persuasive, and I was, I heard you say that this is not, this does not do what we were, what we're talking about it doing. It's not making this distillery area have food trucks. It's doing other things, and we need something that does something different. But what is it specifically about this? Like, what could be different about this ordinance that would make it not do what we, not do what we're fearing it's doing now?
I'm sorry?
Well, so you said, this isn't done right. We need to fix this. But I didn't, I didn't understand why. Like, what's wrong with this?
What's wrong with the ordinance as a whole?
The ordinance edits, the ordinance changes.
Well, if you don't, if we don't bring food trucks into the discussion, we don't revise the ordinance at all. Correct, Mr. Twain?
Yes.
So, I mean, really, these changes have been written in order to discuss food trucks as a separate entity. So, if we don't do that, the ordinance stays as it is, the flower sales and the Christmas tree sales and so forth will still be governed by the conditions that you already see in the ordinance, in terms of setback in location and special land uses and so forth.
I'll just, I'll just make a, I'll just make a statement that, you know, we had the construction fence ordinance come before us, and we, through several different construction ordinance, through several different iterations, we worked to perfect it. Because as we implemented it, we learned a few things. We learned what worked, what didn't. We made some revisions. We just did that recently. I don't see this being any different. I mean, it sounds like there's an appetite here by this commission to look at food trucks and see the benefit that they could potentially bring to certain parts of town. I don't see anyone here preemptively saying we shouldn't allow food trucks at places that serve liquor, or that we shouldn't do it in areas in our central business district. I don't see that. So, I guess, in my opinion, we can't neglect, yeah, there's some discussion out there about the restaurants and during construction, but we also have a number of resident-owned businesses on Fourth Street, small businesses, might I add, where they've invested a lot of money, and they're working hard every day to keep interest in their business, to keep interest in that area. And, you know, you can't argue for one business constituency and not another, but I think in this particular case, you get a big win for those small businesses in that area, with, I think, almost negligible impact to any other business in the rest of the central business district. We have the ability to, this will still go before Planning Commission. If permissions need to be granted, we'll have opportunities to learn and make adjustments and change things. And when the time is right to have a broader conversation about food trucks, we'll be better prepared. And that's why I will not be supporting the motion, but if it fails, I would support a motion to, you know, make these changes on first reading and listen to what comes up at the, you know, at the hearing for second reading. Mr. Gillum?
Just one word of caution. When you talk about comparing the process of coming to grips with food trucks as a planning matter under the zoning ordinance and the construction fence ordinance amendment, keep in mind that construction fence ordinance amendments, that process, that's a health, safety, and welfare ordinance.
Sure.
We're talking about the zoning ordinance and land use in terms of zoning ordinance amendments, and with the construction site ordinance or an ordinance like that, health, safety, and welfare ordinance amendment, you can make the changes, and there's no grandfathering. There are no vested rights, there are no non-conforming uses that are allowed to continue. But under the zoning ordinance, keep in mind that if we make changes to the zoning ordinance, and there are businesses or individuals that act based upon those approvals and put a plan in motion under uses that are permitted at a given time, if we decide there's a problem with that use down the road, we can't stop them per se from continuing that use, as long as they continue to be in compliance with what was allowed at the time that they opened up their operation.
And I think you're making exactly my point, Mr. Gillum, is that you have a very limited scope of businesses that could apply and take advantage of this. And in the event that food trucks aren't right for the city of Royal Oak, they aren't right in the central business district, your exposure is relatively limited with the way these conditions are written. And so, for me, that's why I feel more comfortable, because it is so hard when you give a land use, to move away from it. And I'm not aware of any other mediums. I mean, I guess that's something we can explore down the road, but where you can provide, I mean, land use seems to be the way to manage the transient merchants, i.e. food trucks, as part of a, you know, I mean, obviously, in this ordinance, we call them out as something separate, different. But I think that's the point that I'm trying to make, is there is a possibility to work with all petitioners, because they would have to come and change their plan of operation, because anyone that would be impacted by this ordinance would have a liquor license. And we can, to Commissioner LaVassar's point, we can put certain restrictions agreements. I mean, we do dance agreements, we do a number of things when it comes to plans of operation changes. So, for me, when I look at this ordinance, the unintended consequences, I know we've had a lot of discussion about that. To me, I see this as a way to experiment and have some options available to us, and even if we, for some reason, this turns out to be a really bad thing, which I don't think at all it would be, we, you know, have a very limited scope, you know, of folks that would be impacted, and the legacy of issues would be very limited. So, yes, maybe I didn't articulate it, but that's, I appreciate you clarifying, because that's kind of the point I was making. Commissioner Douglas?
Commissioner Dubbuck said it. Changing an entire ordinance for a single business is not good public policy.
I don't, I don't think that's what we're trying to do in this particular change. I think there are businesses in the central business district outside of Fourth Street that could utilize this, that serve liquor and have their own private lots. Yes, the main, the main proponents of this, yeah, the folks that have brought it to the attention and have really put some motivation behind it, yeah, there are two businesses. There's not a thousand businesses on Fourth Street. There's not a lot of businesses that meet these conditions. But, yeah, there are folks that will benefit from this, just like when we make any ordinance change. And I don't think that's a bad thing. You know, I think it's good for the neighborhood. I live in the neighborhood. I talk to residents in the neighborhood. I see them constantly, and I see them at these establishments as well. And so, I think there's an organic demand for it. But how do you do it in a way that's safe and clear, and, you know, allows the city to learn from it, so we can make a better decision, you know, down the road? I think that's really where we're at. Commissioner Perusch?
This is a question for Mr. Gillum. Taking Commissioner LaVassar's suggestion of go back and see if there's some way we can develop a temporary trial to see if this would work, is our special land use, no, not a special land use, is our special event ordinance flexible enough so that if these businesses, if this goes down tonight and it's not amended, is the special event permit process flexible enough so that if they wanted to come back and say, our special event is for the months of October and November, every Saturday from, you know, three to midnight, or whatever, more than just one day, can it span that length of time? I don't know. I don't have the ordinance in front of me.
My recollection, off the top of my head, is that the commission has approved special event permits in the past for the same event, the same type of activity on more than one day.
Consecutive days?
Yes. I believe that the commission has done that in the past, yes.
So, we might be able to, those businesses might be able to use that process to apply for a trial period over an extended period of days or extended period of time, just to see what the impact is. That might be a way to do a trial. And then, if we think that that's working effectively, the Restaurant Association is not nervous about it, then maybe we can then revisit this issue and bring it back in full ordinance form.
That would be another alternative, yes.
Also, if the ordinance isn't flexible enough, we could change the special event ordinance to make it flexible enough.
Okay.
And we're right back to where we're at today, changing the transient person ordinance.
Not at all.
It's still a very different approach.
Commissioner LaVassar?
Just to follow up on questions from Commissioner Perusch, and she was talking in terms of consecutive days, is the special event ordinance flexible enough where, they wouldn't have to be consecutive days for one event?
It's like if weekends, for instance.
They could be one day a week for, you know, 10 weeks, or...
Can you read it?
No.
I believe so, yeah. I mean, I think, I can't speak for the staff at the Police Department, but I think they would want to pin down specific dates. Part of the, part of the, part of the thinking behind a special event ordinance is, it's an event that's outside of the ordinary course of business. It's either gonna exceed the interior capacity of a building, or it's an activity or an event that's likely to cause congestion along the public roads or within the public right of way. The idea is so the police can allocate their manpower to deal with a problem, if in fact there turns out to be a problem. So, if an applicant could specify different dates that they wanted to, can carry out the activity, I think the Police Department would be able to accommodate that. I mean, I defer to Deputy Chief Frazier on that. I'm not speaking for him or the chief, but, I mean, I don't think you could have an open-ended, say, you know, on whatever days we feel like it, or whatever days it doesn't rain, we're gonna have a food truck out there. I don't think that would be consistent with the intent of the ordinance.
Okay, but if we had something that said every Tuesday during the month of October, from this time in the, in the day to that time at the end of the day, that would be something allowable under the ordinance?
From a legal standpoint, yes.
And the other aspect I would, question I would have is, is do we have a sense of what the demands on our public safety staff would be for an event like this? It's certainly, it's not something like an arts beats and eats, or a dream cruise. It certainly isn't that type of demand, but do we have a sense of whether this would significantly increase demand on our resources?
I think Deputy Chief Frazier has an answer to that, I assume.
I'll do my best. It would be a case-by-case basis, but just a basic food truck at a restaurant or a liquor establishment, I don't see being a whole lot of police use or need for police assistance and things like that. And we have had special event permits that have been multiple days. We've had a couple clothing sales at Mr. Allen's where they do four consecutive Saturdays for things like that. So, we have done that. It's not something we do often, but we have had special event permits that go consecutive days that we have approved in the past.
I think it's a good idea. I think the challenge that we have with special event permits too, and food trucks, is, you know, how do you handle when everybody wants to do a food truck now in the same way? You know, are we prepared to handle that and evaluate those on a case-by-case basis? That might become its own animal in itself before we're ready to deal with it, before we're ready to, you know, see how one or two of these go. Just my thoughts. So, we have a motion on the table to go with the Planning Commission's recommendation. Full disclosure, I was not at that Planning Commission meeting, and we're one person short, so it was a three to two. The, so denying it would just make all this go, or voting for this motion would basically nullify, or not nullify, but these ordinance changes wouldn't go through. And so, does everyone understand the ordinance, or does everyone understand the motion that's on the table? Sometimes these negative motions can trigger an accidental yes or no. Okay. So, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
I see the hands of the nays.
One, two.
Four, okay. So, there's a motion on the table to proceed with the changes. Commissioner LaVassar?
The second bullet point where we, my motion would be that we adopt the zoning ordinance text amendments upon first reading without modification and schedule a public hearing prior to final disposition. And I would look for perspective from the city attorney on what we might be able to do to modify it, to try this on a trial basis, and it might be doing something other than adopting this ordinance. And following up on Commissioner Douglas's comments, getting some perspective on, from economic development on how this would impact our city.
A motion by Commissioner LaVassar, second by Commissioner Macy. Discussion?
No.
Okay, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
I see the hands of the nays. Okay, the motion passes. It'll come back here for second reading. We'll have a little bit more information. Mr. Gillum?
Well, my understanding of the motion is that the commission is asking to have a public hearing at this point.
Yes.
And I, my sense would be a public hearing before second reading.
That'll be a long meeting.
And a second reading could be brought forward with the benefit of any comments the commission received at the public hearing. That's, that's my analysis or my thinking, but it's your motion, so.
So, in that instance, should I bring a motion then, that we schedule a first hearing, a first reading to correspond with that public hearing? That would be my motion. It would modify the motion that we just passed.
You've already, the, the, the ordinance text amendments have now been approved on first reading tonight.
Okay.
So, and again, my interpretation of the second bullet point was that before the text amendments would be brought back for second reading, that the city commission would like to conduct a public hearing and obtain input. And then, based upon that input, then the ordinance will be modified between my office and the Planning Division, and then brought back for second reading at a subsequent date, I guess, at a, at a third date, if tonight being the first.
So, tell me if this accomplishes the mission. If I were to move that we hold the public hearing at the next regularly scheduled city commission meeting, and that the second reading not take place till the next city commission thereafter, would that accomplish the mission?
If that's sufficient time for the public hearing notice.
We need 10 days prior, and who are we giving this to? 300 feet, like, and a notice are you looking at? Or just a notice in the paper?
I don't think it'd be a 300-feet thing. It would be a citywide thing, I would think, and it would...
Yeah, there's no property that this particularly relates to at this time.
So, then I guess it's a question of what the publication deadlines are for the papers.
Right, so, so... Do you, is there any disagreement that, you know, that that timeline is, I mean, we can always check what the publications require out of us to get notices put in place, but if there's a hiccup regarding that, I mean, I think the, does anyone object to moving at that sort of pace to get this evaluated?
Is the idea to schedule the, the public hearing on the next possible city commission meeting date?
Yeah.
And if it can be in two weeks, it could be in two weeks. If it can't be in two weeks...
It could be in two weeks.
Then it would be at the first meeting in November.
Is that practical?
So, the next possible, whichever that would be.
Okay, so, you know, today being the eighth, so I guess we're looking at the 22nd for the public hearing, and that's...
If you're talking about a notice in the review, which goes to every single home, that's not a problem. We can get that in this week.
That'd be sufficient.
For next Wednesday's review.
Okay, so, again, let me know if this motion works. If I were to move that we hold our public hearing on October 22nd, and that our second reading not take place until, and I'm looking for the day here. We're gonna have to push out because of the election. November 12th. Would that work? Mr. Gillum?
Based upon the, excuse me, the discussion I have heard at the table tonight, yes, I think it would.
And then that would be my motion. Motion by Commissioner LaVassar. Is there a second?
Yes, I guess a second.
Motion's on the table. You're gonna second?
Second, but then I have a question.
Second by Commissioner Macy.
So, if it's printed in the review, not this week, but next week, does it have to be 10 weeks from that date? Because that won't be...
Ten days.
No, 10 days from that date, because the meeting...
Date, it's published, right?
Which would not be this week, but next week, and then 10 days from that won't be the next week.
Right, it would have to be the trivium.
Okay.
Which does not go wherever you want it.
Okay, do we have to specify the dates in the motion, or can we just say the next feasible after publication?
Yeah, I think that might be a little bit more, if you're okay with that, Commissioner LaVassar. I think that might give a little bit more flexibility, but...
The motion's on the table. Do we need an amendment to amend the motion? I would be fine with that.
Can staff just handle this?
This has to be a motion to settle the public hearing. Can't staff just do it in due time to make sure we're complying with all notice and laws? Can't we just direct staff to do...
Do it right.
Right, like, set the notice and...
At the next available date.
At the appropriate time.
It's clear to me. Mr. Johnson's comfortable with it.
It's like, you guys can just bring it back when it's time.
Separating the hearing and the, and the second reading, I think, right? That's what we want to do, is make sure that the second reading doesn't take place the same day as the public hearing.
Right.
Right.
You guys understand that direction? Do you need that in the form of a motion? Do you need that in the form of a motion, or just?
That's been my interpretation of your action. I'm only speaking for myself.
Is everybody good with that? So we have a motion on the table, if we, belongs to the table, we vote no on it, then I feel like we don't need any other further instruction from Mr. Gillum. If that's okay with you, Commissioner LaVassar, I think he.
I'm, I'm fine with that. I'll, I'll vote no on my own motion.
Okay. This is reminiscing of Commissioner Razor.
You can draw it.
You can draw it, yeah.
I can't.
All right, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed?
No.
Okay, so the motion fails, and we have recorded on television and audio that Mr. Gillum understands, and Ms. Alice understands the direction. It's up for him. Okay. Unless anyone strongly objects to the interpretation Mr. Gillum had. Okay, good. We're going to move on now. All right. That was not confusing at all. All right, this brings us to item number 10, the authorization to form a 2020 census complete count committee.
Good evening, Mayor and City Commission. The 2020 census is nearing. The U.S. Census Bureau has requested our participation in a community partnership and engagement program. The goal of this program is to motivate people to respond to the 2020 census. The program suggests establishing a Royal Oak Complete Count Committee to engage citizens and encourage participation. Royal Oak saw a 4% decrease in census response rates between 2000 and 2010. That's about 2,289 people that were not counted, which represents a combined loss of about $200,000 annually in state shared revenue and state road funding. So this also reduces, or the underrepresentation also reduces the city's representation at the state and federal levels. The committee is not advisory or policymaking, it's just to distribute information and encourage participation. It's recommended that the commission have the appointments committee select a chair and the initial group, and then the committee members can invite those they feel are important to the process. What we're asking for tonight is a resolution to establish this committee. A resolution has been provided to you, and I can answer any questions you may have.
Questions for Mr. Edge. Commissioner Dubac.
So just to be clear, we're not prescribing who would sit on the committee, rather is kind of giving a general overview of the type of folks that the appointments committee should bring in.
Yes.
To the discussion.
It will likely be leaders of faith-based communities, or educational institutions, people who might go more underrepresented.
Okay, great. Commissioner Dubac?
Yeah, I'll move for approval of the resolution.
Motion by Commissioner Dubac. We have a second by Commissioner Perush. Discussion, Commissioner Dubac.
Sure, I would just say that I know that the nonprofit community is also actively involved in this effort because of the federal dollars at stake, congressional representation at stake. So, again, my day job at United Way, we're, we're at a table with nonprofit entities trying to do outreach into the community, make sure people are aware of the importance of being counted, so I guess I would just say whoever's on appointments at that time should probably engage with local nonprofits. I know that there's a wide variety of them who are, who are really trying to get this message out there and make people whom, for a variety of reasons, might be uncomfortable answering all the questions in the survey, and let them know about the rights and the nondisclosure, and how important this is for our community.
Michelle LaVassar?
Just curious what we might be able to do to encourage people to apply for this committee, assuming that we pass it today, so that our appointments committee does have some applicants to review.
That's a good question. Commissioner Macy?
So I don't know that I have an answer to that, but it looks like the appointments committee is, I thought, just appointing the chair, right? Or no, we're appointing everybody?
We were suggesting that you appoint the chair and an initial core group.
Okay.
Generally, when people fill out the applications, a lot of times people check a box to be on any city committee. Those would be one set of candidates. You might also want to seek out particular people that represent some of the organizations that have been mentioned.
You know, a thought that I have, maybe Commissioner LaVassar, not to brainstorm here at the table, but, you know, we probably should put this, I mean, there's, it's twofold, right? We need to put a post out there on social media to say, hey, it's important for you to participate and get counted, because look at the things that are at stake, just the argument that was made to us tonight. And then with that, we need people from, that meet these sort of types of criteria, whether they be faith-based institutions, educators, whatever it may be, to come and apply, because we need your expertise to help, you know, get the word out, to ensure that this outreach happens. So, I think that's one avenue we should really consider for two reasons. One, being counted matters, so residents need to know to participate, and two, getting others to help us with this mission.
Basically, we want to, anyone who can encourage other people and hopefully influence other people to participate and actually fill out the census forms.
And that board, once it's formed.
Should be welcome.
And that board, once it's formed, can bring in as many people as they see necessary to really help out and support with the, with the mission. Mr. Perush?
And I don't think that there would be any objection at all, either from us or from the committee, if there was someone out there in the community who said, look, I really want to get educated about this, I think it's really important, and I want to go out there in the community and sell this thing, whether it's a retired engineer or whoever it is, but if there's people who are really excited about doing something like this, I see no reason why the committee would, would want to exclude them.
Right.
So.
Tall hands on deck.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, if they, if they read about it on Facebook or whatever, and they say, you know, I'd really like to do that, you know, this would be, you know, I can't imagine that the committee would turn down their participation.
We had 100 people on the committee, that would be amazing.
Yeah.
Wonderful.
The more the barrier.
Right. Does that help answer the question? Now that we talked about it, I kind of think about, so the committee could be, yeah, it would have to be like, oh, an unusual circumstance for them not to accept somebody that's willing to put in the effort to do the outreach. Okay, but you need that initial core people to kind of organize it and put some ground rules in place. Michelle LaVassar, any?
Well, you know, my concern is simply making sure we have people who are passionate about this, who are aware of this, and are applying for it. I'd much rather have someone who is passionate about this and said, this is what I want to do, as opposed to checking a generic box, saying anything will be fine.
Agreed. It's going to be outreach, which isn't, takes more than checking a box. Shoe leather and passion. So we have a motion on the table. Any other discussion? All right, with none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. All right, let's hope this ordinance counts, or let's hope this authorization counts. I blew that joke. All right. This brings us to item number 11. Tough crowd tonight. Snow removal ordinance, first reading.
awkwardly offers training. Oh, no!
Could he also help with resumes, Mr. Johnson?
I say, that was a good one.
You're back on track. 15 all.
Salvation. Mayor, Fornian, and City Commissioners, this is a third version of the snow removal ordinance for your consideration. You recall that we talked previously about a, a model that was strictly a private clearance model, where the, essentially the sole responsibility fell upon the homeowners, and if snow was not removed in a timely fashion, they could be ticketed, and then eventually, snow could be removed at the homeowner's expense by the city or a city contractor. We had, also had discussion about a combined clearance model.
Don't talk about it.
Where different zones would be set up in the city, whereas the city would have responsibility for snow and ice removal. In certain zones, property owners would have responsibility for removal of snow and ice. In other zones, with varying timeframes depending upon the designation of the areas and where property was located in which area. This is a, a model, it's, it's patterned roughly after the way that we handle tall grass, although recognizing that there are differences between tall grass and the fall of snow in the wintertime here in Royal Oak. But this model would utilize the declaration of a snow emergency as a trigger. Snow emergencies generally are declared when there's four or more inches of snow that The thinking there is to have a clear starting point, so we don't get into any arguments or discussions about a certain amount of snow falling, or when sidewalk is reasonably passable and things like that. The bottom line is, if a snow emergency is declared, the clock starts to run. And residents would have a period of 72 hours to remove snow and ice from the public sidewalks and the curb ramps adjacent to their property, if they did have any curb ramps that were adjacent. So, if after the 72 hours, the snow and ice has not been removed, either by the homeowner or by Mother Nature herself, then the code enforcement staff, either acting on a verified complaint, or based upon their own observations as they're carrying out their other duties in the city. If it was determined that the snow had not been removed, then they would provide written mail notice to the property owner and a resident, if they were not the same person, that the snow still needed to be removed. And if the snow still had not been removed, within an additional 72 hours from the date of the written notice itself, so a couple more days for the notice to be mailed, and maybe another day or two for the individual to clear the snow, then the city would be authorized to come in, depending upon availability of staff and contractors, to do the work to come in and actually clear the snow and ice from the sidewalk, and then bill the property for the work that was done. There would be no provision for any tickets to be issued, we wouldn't be involving the district court at all. So the emphasis here would be to get the snow and the ice removed in a timely fashion. And if the snow and ice isn't removed in a timely fashion by the property owner and/or the resident of the property, then city forces would be authorized to come in, remove the snow and ice, and then ultimately, the city would be reimbursed for the cost of removing the snow. So, if you have questions or comments, I'd be happy to, to answer those. But again, I'm looking for more direction from the commission as to how the commission wants to deal with the snow removal issue. This is something that's been identified as a goal, we have an objective to deal with this, but we're still looking for ways to effectively deal with the situation as far as the commission is concerned.
Mr. Gillum, I do have a question, maybe you can help with clarity. The 72 hours after the snow emergency, is it after it's declared, or after the snow is complete, you know, hey, it stopped snowing?
From the point that the snow emergency is declared.
Okay, so that's an issue I have with, with, because, I mean, it can snow for, you know, 15 hours, 24 hours, we've seen. To me, I'll just, I guess be the first to comment, if we were to go down this path, I would even think that the 72 hours should start after the plow has, you know, for that snow emergency, when we send the plows out, has actually completed the, the pass, or second pass of that street. I know we do a good job tracking when plows pass, so I think that, as a starting point for me, to, to consider this, that would be important.
Maybe, if I could, maybe when the snow emergency is terminated or canceled, at that point?
Yeah, that would actually be a better way, in my opinion. Because Mother Nature is unpredictable. Commissioner Gibbs?
That's, that's a great point, and I wanted to say the same exact thing, but the problem with the plows is that sometimes, I live on the north end, I live west of Beaumont, it can take three days for the plows to get out to my house. So, if I have to shovel, I now have a snow blower, so I can snow blow, but it's, it's been a shovel for 16 years. I know, yin and yang.
Kyle and I just had three kids, so we throw them out there, we don't know what happens.
Might be the year.
But after the snow plow has gone through, at least on a first pass, because the second pass, it doesn't blow as much up into your driveway, typically. But if we were able to do 72 hours past the, 72 hours after the snow plow blows everything back up on your driveway, and you have to reshovel, and, you know, it can be a foot thick.
Yeah, or even if it's an inch, it's still snow.
And wet and heavy and muggy, or not muggy, but wet and heavy and icy, and that's next to impossible, which brings up a point made by one of the residents at Public Comment. Unless, how, how do you get rid of the ice if it's not, you know, 40 degrees? There's not, and dry enough for the water to evaporate? That's, there are measures that can be taken to chip it, or, you know, break it up, salt works to an extent, and then it freezes again, if, if it's very cold. But I've, I, I'm one of those people that I will go out with the garden shovel, and I will pound and clear it until I can get out my driveway. I've had to before. I think we need some, a little bit of forgiveness on this ice issue, because as it reads, you can't clear ice in, you know, 25-degree weather, that's cloudy, and nothing's evaporating, and nothing, you know, that, that's.
Let me raise this question, do we need to, do we need to address ice? Do we need to deal with snow, with ice? I mean, I've indicated all along that ice is problematic.
I, I think limiting, or restricting it to snow, because again, you know, the sidewalks are better now that we've, you know, half the city has had to replace them, and it's not draining, or there's not the, you know, the dens. But there are low-lying areas that are just going to have a sheet of ice all winter.
Or worse yet, you do clear it, and then you get a little warm, because we're in southeast Michigan, it melts, and then it freezes the next day, and then now you got ice, you know, it's.
And it's black ice, and it's, it's slippery.
Commissioner Perush?
I, I agree. If it were me, I would take the word ice out of this and just deal with snow. And the other thing that we have to remember is that for those of us who rely on private contractors to clear our snow, they will clear the snow, but they will not clear ice. I mean, you can contract separately for that, and pay a whole lot more, and have them come out and continually salt your sidewalk, so that it, the ice doesn't form. But general snow removal contracts deal just with snow, not with ice.
Mr. Johnson, you have a comment?
I didn't really intend to get involved in this discussion, but I'm going to have to take exception to the direction that we're heading on a safety basis. If you don't require the removal of ice, then you're better off leaving the snow. It's safer with the snow there, if, than it is to remove the snow from the ice.
Then we've now been.
Likely to slip on the ice than you are on snow.
Well, I understand that, and, but that's, that's why it needs to be raised, so.
Commissioner Dubac? Oh, yes, caller's on the side of the. Both Commissioner Dubac, then Commissioner Douglas and Commissioner Macy.
Unless he says what I'm going to say. Go ahead.
I don't know. Obviously, we've been chewing on this for a long time. Mr. Gillum's been working in good faith to get us something that's palatable. I'm still struggling with, the intent is right, you know, if we're going to be a walkable city, we need to be walkable everywhere, all year round, more a place that snows three, four months out of the year, this is a problem. The solution still feels heavy-handed, I'm concerned that it's going to be an administrative nightmare for us, and very tedious for residents. The intent is right, the spirit of what we're trying to do here is right, and I hate to be the one to continue to dial it back, because it's the right thing to do, but I don't know if this fix is the fix. What I'm thinking, having tried to figure out how we, you know, kind of develop a culture of, you know, I don't think there's a lot of just folks who aren't doing it because they don't want to do it, right? For some folks, it's a timing issue, for some folks, it's the physical ability to it issue. And sometimes we just get snow so many days in a row, people are just going to work and need to get caught up, but that doesn't mean that they're a chronic offender. And all those people are going to get caught up in a really heavy-handed ordinance. And that, I, I don't know that that's going to really improve the culture in the way that we're talking about, which is, you know, making sure we have walkable streets, or walkable sidewalks in the colder months. What if we developed a very clearly worded door hanger, where folks, I think also, folks aren't comfortable, like, telling their neighbor, like, hey, it's really inconvenient for me that you're not shoveling your walk. Where if necessary, if someone's a chronic offender, folks can report it, or if code enforcement sees it, like, people who are not shoveling, we have a door hanger prepared, and we slap it on the door, it says, "The city of Royal Oak, you know, really encourages, you know, 100% snow removal. We understand that there are circumstances that arise that make this difficult. If you have a disability or, or need help, here are some services that do it on a volunteer basis. If you need a contractor, here are some preferred vendors," and maybe we can get people to quote us like a special city price, that if people call from the city of Royal Oak for these, you know, preferred vendors, that they can get a special price for those folks. I was wondering if we do, like, a legit PR campaign, a messaging campaign, and specifically to those people who are not getting it done, if, can that start to build the culture and normalize the need for this? And it would also. And it would also give us a better idea of how big a problem is it that we're dealing with. It seems like that might be a more friendly Disney way kind of touch before we go with the really punitive ordinance, which, by the time we actually get to a place where we're fining or shoveling someone out, I mean, we're what now, like four days, five days past the snow, which, six to eight, eight days past the snow, which, I mean, how often is it that the snow is actually there for eight days straight? I think that it becomes an enforcement nightmare and it would just create, I think, bad blood between those who are being fined and those who are just trying to make the streets passable in the colder months. This shouldn't have to be a fight. So, what if we just did a messaging effort, like a well-designed, city-branded door hanger that's a friendly message reminding folks that your neighbors with disabilities, your parents with strollers, you know, need to pass the streets in the colder months. You know, we really encourage a hundred percent sidewalk clearing within seventy-two hours. If you need help, here are some resources. That's just, that's a thought.
What'd the data say about fifteen percent we observe do not clear their sidewalks?
On any given day, but that's not fifteen percent of residents are chronically not doing.
Correct. But I mean, at any given time, fifteen, so it's not a insurmountable, you know, problem to overcome of those if half of them listen, you know, and, you know, tap into the resources, you've done some good. And then you can figure out what to do with the other seven percent. Interesting. Okay. Commissioner Douglas?
So, Mr. Gillum, what happened to zones? The idea of, I mean, in our earlier kind of thought piece, it talked about different zones. Downtown, residential, commercial areas, et cetera. Is there a reason why we, that concept fell by the wayside?
We had never really put meat on the bones as to what the zones would be. That was something, going to be something that was going to be the subject of further discussion. Number one, I have a problem with drawing a blanket distinction between residential zones and commercial zones. I think if the goal of the community is to be walkable, it should both be the walk of the residential and the commercial zones that are walkable. To pick up on the point that was made earlier, if the community is going to be walkable, the entire community needs to be walkable. I think then you also have a problem with, I mean, if you're using zoning concepts with non-conforming uses, what do you do about the residential property that's located in a commercial zone?
Well, the case I've made is that we establish rules for ma- major, for corridors, for major streets, which we could clearly and easily identify. Now, granted, some of those have residential uses on them, but, or a mix of residential and commercial, but I'm not talking about land use, I'm talking about geography. Because to me, I've said it before, I'll say it again, those corridors are where a majority of the traffic is. That's where the bus stops are. Those are the routes that people take to schools. And, and I would think that, I mean, it would be, it would be a reasonable compromise to not impose this on our residential neighborhoods, but to impose this on corridors. So, that would be my first case. My second comment would be that the timing that's proposed here, you know, seventy-two hours, well, here we say seventy-two hours within the declaration of a snow emergency. Well, that's three days. If we wait till the snow emergency is done, then we've got whatever, a day or two of snow, and then three days after that, and then two days for the building department to send out a notice. And then people have seventy-two hours after that to actually clear the snow. I mean, we're up at, we're at eight days now. I think that's meaningless. I mean, if we're going to do this, I think it needs to happen in time for people to actually take advantage of the cleared sidewalks. And I would say that four, I mean, I would make it two inches. And I'm not sure how we dictate that if, you know, the natural, National Weather Service tells us how much snow has fallen in a given period of time. I would say two inches, because, I mean, that's hard to walk in. So, that, I mean, the case I would make would be to limit this to corridors, geography, and to set a lower tolerance for number of inches. And the City of Ann Arbor, for example, I mean, sending out a, they don't send out a letter from the building department. They go put a sticker on the door that says, "You've got X hours to, twenty-four hours to clear your sidewalk." That would lessen the burden on the city administration. That's the case I make.
If I could, what happens in Ann Arbor? I get a sticker on my door and I don't clear the sidewalk?
We still send somebody out to, I mean, we stick with the, whatever the phrase is, the "we'll do it if you don't" model, not fines. But that's more likely to be an incentive to the, especially to businesses and commercial properties along those corridors. Apartment owners as well. And yes, there will be some private residences that are affected with that, but we're addressing the place where a majority of the people go.
Commissioner Macy?
I like the idea about the corridors, which we've discussed before. I mean, I think it's funny that we're, we're at the same time here, we're saying, this is too harsh and it's not harsh enough. Like this is, people might be punished by this, but no, they won't be because it'll take eight days too long, which I think is, I mean, we've put Mr. Gillum in an impossible situation. And I think he's brought us back, essentially what we asked for is, you know, we want them to do something, so we want to shake our finger and then do it if they don't, but we don't want anyone to have to pay any fines for this. Unless it comes to the situation where it's really been bad and they haven't taken care of it. I think the timing is an impossible issue to come to. I mean, I think it's arguable that even if you think from the declaration of a snow emergency, seventy-two hours, it's not until seventy-two hours after the declaration that you can make the first complaint. And then as Commissioner Douglas said, we still have another five days. So, there's still, there's still plenty of time, even if, even if the snow emergency lasts for a day or two, it seems to me. And if we want to get the streets cleared and, or the sidewalks cleared in a timely fashion, it seems like we've got to have some limit. We can't make it, you know, "Snow emergency and then another five days, and then another five days to notify them." I had the same thought about the stickers on the door, although I was thinking of them as door hangers instead. And I had, I had the thought, not of the proactive door hangers, which I really like, but of having on those door hangers all the information that Commissioner Dubbuck was talking about. Like, "If you're having trouble doing this, here are some resources. Here's how to reach out." Because we do want this to be a way that we're reaching out to our residents and saying, "If you're having problems with this, we have ways to help you and let's, let's get around this." Because I agree, I don't think a lot of people are out there like snickering and watching people fall down on their sidewalks. They're, they're not doing it because they're busy or they're out of town or, you know, they're, they're not able to clear it themselves and don't have means to find someone to do it for them. So, I do think there's a lot of, a lot of things that we could do more proactively, as Commissioner Dubbuck suggested. But I, I do think that there's, there is a place for an ordinance. And I think one like this that is kind of meaningless, as we've all agreed, is not the worst thing in the world because it's, it's another way of getting out the message, really. Like, after this amount of time, "Hey, by the way, we noticed that you haven't cleared your sidewalk and we're going to come do it for you." That'll get people out the door to clear it, to clear it, I think. Nobody wants to have this, have a lien or have a fine for this. So, I, I think there is a place for the ordinance. I also feel confused about the ice for the reasons that have been mentioned up here. I think it's worth mentioning them. I think it's worth leaving the ice in. And also relying on good faith of the neighbors. I mean, if, you know, you don't want to run out and claim just because your neighbor's sidewalk re-iced at midnight, you don't want to be standing there at 1:00 AM to call, right? I mean, that's not what we're trying to encourage people to do. People are going to call on the chronic offenders where it's a really bad area. And I don't, I actually feel a little bit uncomfortable with code enforcement being the one, proactively going out and looking for these bad actors. I almost think that we want it to be, I mean, you know which of your neighbors doesn't clear and maybe you know why and maybe you can reach out to them. But I feel like it's going to be not a great look if we're roaming the streets looking for this. And I do worry about the snow plows coming through afterwards. If there's a, if you've cleared your sidewalks and the snow plows come, I live on a corner, all the snow gets packed up right on those curb ramps that I already cleared. I do think that is an issue. And I did have one question from Mr. Gillum. The, the cost that we would put the lien on the taxes for, is it just the cost of the actual removal? And do we have a sense how much that is? Maybe that's for Mr. Johnson.
At the moment, no, I don't have a sense of how much that is. But if we do it along the model that we use for mowing, we do it all on overtime. Because I don't have people available right now to do snow clearance.
And there typically is a, maybe a ten or fifteen percent administrative fee.
There is an administrative fee, okay.
That's stacked on top of it.
But in most cases, I would imagine you're not spending, you know, two hours or even an hour doing it. So, it'd be interesting to know what that model would be. My concern on a model like that is, I'm not saying I would do this, but if there's one to three snow emergencies a year, some people might be like, "Oh, yeah, I don't have to hire a service." But when it does get really bad and pile up or whatever, I'll pay the thirty bucks, fifty bucks, whatever it is, you know, a couple times a year. And then now our staff is, "I'll call on myself." You know what I mean? I'd like to complain about my property. Someone comes out there for less than what you'd have to hire a snow contractor for, for a seasonal rate, you know, of whatever they charge to do your driveway and sidewalk, so.
DPS will make sure you feel it, I'm sure. Yeah, they don't, they don't go with market rate.
But we can't, we can't charge more than what it costs us to deliver the service, so.
Well, it's punitive.
And overtime.
Well, you charge overtime, but, I mean, even then, if it's fifty bucks, I mean, I don't know if it takes ten minutes to do my sidewalk. Not even that, probably takes three minutes to do it.
But remember, if you have to remove the ice, there's that whole.
Sure, they could throw salt down and, yeah, I mean, every property is going to be unique, but there is that incentive for people just to use the exceptional services of our DPS. Commissioner Levaser?
I, first of all, with regard to that point, I think it would make more sense to try to contract this out than to pay overtime for our DPS. I suspect we could keep the cost down for residents if that's the direction we go. But I, I do believe that the better approach is what Commissioner Dubbuck indicated and taking a bit more of a softer approach and seeing if that's successful in alleviating any problems that we may have. I'd prefer to do the friendlier approach, simply the notice on a door hanger and see if that helps alleviate the problems that we may have had.
Commissioner Dubbuck?
See, I would just say that the worst thing we could possibly do is have people receiving fines, but still have fifteen percent of uncleared walkways, you know, within a week of a major snowfall, which I feel like is a highly likely outcome of this, is the problem's not actually solved, except now people are angry because they're getting fines. I don't, that's the worst thing that we could do, and I feel like that's where we're landing.
This approach does not have fines.
They're going to be getting billed. They're going to be getting billed from the city.
But they only get billed if it's been cleared.
Right, which, and the idea that it's going to get to the point where the snow persists long enough that we'll actually be clearing it means that we haven't really solved any problem. If the snow is more likely to melt naturally than be cleared in time to actually not be a nuisance, we haven't fixed the problem, but we have created a heavy-handed ordinance for staff to deal with and for residents to deal with. I just, I don't, and no disrespect, Mr. Gillum, I know you've been working, you've been trying to find a powerful solution for this, and I just, I don't.
No offense taken.
I, I, I just don't think that we're there. I think what we have is something that we'll have to wrangle with and residents will have to wrangle with and will still largely have the same problem. But I think we could get equal, if not better, results by trying with a communication strategy, a direct communication strategy, and allowing residents to say, "You know, if there's uncleared walk, call this line. We'll drop them this note."
It's okay to ask for help.
Yeah, and that, that seems like a good place to start. The last article on this discussion said, I think, the first snow removal ordinance discussion was in, what, the thirties? I think Mr. Gillum dug that up somewhere. We're not the first to grapple with this and still come up short. But we could do something of value in at least like a designated communication. And also like hotline strategy, where call this line if there's someone that's not removing it, we'll nudge them.
So, you know, we do have volunteer groups that do help out. I'm aware of one that in, on Rochester Road, Pastor Jacob and his congregation, they go out and rake people's leaves when they need help. You know what I mean? There are, there are volunteers out there that are willing to help people out. Now, if somebody on Eleven Mile Road has a flourishing, great business and says, "Hey, man, I can't do it." You know, I'm, you know, I'm elderly, I can't get out there yet. You know, that might be a different situation, but certainly for residential property owners, that is a good, good avenue. Commissioner Perusch?
No, it was me, but I, I will not say that comment. I think that, and I, I think if any, any of the residents had a problem and they reached out to their neighbors, more than likely, I can't promise that to be true, they would get some help. We, you know, I've, I've cleared sidewalks for neighbors of mine, the elderly, the disabled, the, you know, people with fifteen little kids and they're, they're just, their hands are full. Their hands are tied. And I have no problem doing it. I can't do it all the time, but if we can encourage them to just ask for help, I think we're going to get a lot further than by punishing them.
Although I will say, the thing that kind of motivated me behind, you know, looking into this when it was first brought up, I think even by Commissioner Douglas, was the scary event that I witnessed on Eleven Mile Road of a man in a electric wheelchair having to go on the road. And he drove by several places of business that, you know, easily could have, I mean, part of your property management plan is to have, I mean, you have to pay your electric bill, you've got to pay your sewer bill, you've got to pay your employees, and you've got to remove the snow on the sidewalks in front of your business. And I know that's not prescribed at this point to do that, clearly. But, you know, we do, the idea of the corridors where bus stops are in, in major areas of traffic is not an unreasonable look. I do agree that taking a softer approach and getting residents help where they need help is very important, but I don't know that that approach will help us on commercial corridors where people simply are making a business decision not to do it. They have every incentive not to do it, right? And how do we remedy that part of it? So, Mr. Gillum, clear. Clear as ice. This is really snowballed, hasn't it?
You ran out and you're out.
That's too much.
You hit your limit, Mike.
Getting a frosty reception to those.
Oh, now we're just piling on.
This is drifting way out of control. Commissioner Perusch?
My sense of this whole issue, having dealt with it in a past life, a long time ago, when the city considered this, is that there is no perfect solution when you put it in the forms of an ordinance, because no matter what you do in terms of all of the other ordinance iterations that we have thought about, there is some major flaw in it which is going to drive you crazy as the city workers, or it's going to drive the residents crazy. I mean, one of the issues with this, because the timing is not specific, it's not hard enough, an hard, hard and fast rule, you're going to have snow stopping and immediately, in like an hour, if, if the neighbor, which they don't particularly care for, if their walk isn't shoveled, they're going to be on the phone to City Hall. And they're not going to understand that there's a seventy-two hours, and then there's the snow emergency, and then there's the notice and all this other kind of stuff. I mean, you're going to get inundated with phone calls from people who think that, "Well, the snow stopped. They've got to be out there cleaning their sidewalk because I did." And, you know, and they didn't. I, I think we're going to get inundated with calls if that happens.
Grass takes a lot longer to grow.
Because in every snowfall, it's going to be a different period of time. When do the plows start? When do they stop? When does the emergency stop? You know, how many hours have you added on? It's, it's never a hard and fast rule. But as we've all discussed tonight, you can't have a hard and fast rule because every snowfall is different and every snow emergency is different. And you don't know how many days it's going to take to get the plows around to your neighborhood if you're the last area for a particular snowfall event. And you're, you know, it doesn't get plowed back onto your sidewalk until day three, when they finally come through after twelve inches. You know, when does the clock start ticking? So, you know, I understand that there's bad actors out there. I feel terrible about people who struggle to deal with snow in the winter because of mobility issues. I just don't think that we're going to find an ordinance that we're all going to be comfortable with and that the residents are going to be comfortable with and be willing to live with. Because we've been trying to do it for a long time. This is year like thirty-two. And here we are.
So, what's the will of the commission? Commissioner Macy?
I just had one, one thought that I, to add on from what Commissioner Perusch just said. I wonder if when we put out the snow emergencies, we could say, "Please try to clear your sidewalk within seventy-two hours of this declaration. If you notice a neighbor hasn't cleared in that time, here's a number to call to find, to see if they can get help or to give them to get help," like something else we can.
Leave a message. A volunteer group can go and run out there and see.
So, I just feel, I wonder if we could add that as part of our snow emergency, whatever, declaration.
We get texts. Maybe that's something that can be added to a text.
Yeah.
I, I get texts anyway, not, there's emails that go out. So. I, I get texts anyway, not, there's emails that go out, so it's on Facebook, it's, I'm sure it's on Twitter now.
So we can do that. What are we doing with this ordinance? Are we putting it on ice?
Oh.
What's going on? Commissioner Dubbuck?
That was actually a serious use of a.
You didn't mean that one?
Well, I meant it, but I felt it had less, um, unintentional.
I'm not interested in moving ahead with the ordinance, I'm not making a motion on the ordinance.
Okay, all right. By process of elimination, we have won. So I'm just going to remain quiet until either the discussion passes, someone moves to adjourn, or we give a different motion to give poor Mr. Gillum yet another task, or whatever other direction may be the desire of this commission. Commissioner Dubbuck.
I think there's been a few, you know, good ideas raised. I mean, unless someone has the appetite to move on this ordinance, I'll move to direct staff to come back with a, like a strategic communication plan on this, which means notice, like, like a door hanger type thing, like I'm saying, or sticker, whatever works best for folks who either are, were notified by neighbors that there's spaces that aren't cleared, or, or they just happen to see and they're doing business, code enforcement sees, just so we can spread that information, we can, in all of our communications about snow emergencies, add on, I think, what is a very friendly message, like, out of courtesy to your neighbors and to keep our community walkable, please have your sidewalk cleared within 72 hours of this emergency. And, you know, there's no like threat of punishment behind it necessarily, but.
I think, I think.
Let this message on that make that a cultural thing, that that's what we aspire to be. And if you're the one that's not doing it within 72 hours, maybe the, you know, the hive will.
So you're making a motion?
That's my motion, is to build a, a communication strategy.
By Commissioner Dubbuck, second by Commissioner Levaser. Additional discussion or detail? Commissioner Dubbuck?
I think I said most of the words.
I think we all agree.
Just.
Commissioner Douglas?
I mean, just in general, I'm going to say 72 hours, I mean, giving people three days after the, the snow ends. I mean, not that we're, we're codifying any of this, but I guess as staff develops, you know, a communication strategy for us, I'm going to say 24, not 72. After it ends, not from the snow emergency. After it starts, after the snow stops.
Just as encouraging a cultural best practice and, and norms in our neighborhoods, I think that's great.
I think what happens, I think, and this is important, you have a lot of folks that, you know, say, well, it's snowing out, I don't walk on the sidewalks, whatever, but they're not staring out their window 24 hours a day to see people during the day while they're at work using the sidewalks, or walking to school, or in wheelchairs if they live on a busier route, or any route for that matter. And I think that awareness, yeah, delivering mail, I mean, you could do a whole campaign here with a mailman making a statement, you know, somebody in, you know, that, in a wheelchair or, or whatever, kids walking to school to really help, you know, drive home the point that, yeah, in the wintertime, just like they do in the summertime, people are using the sidewalks. And the cool thing to do, wait, that wasn't a pun, but the right thing to do is, you know, clear your sidewalks. Mr. Macy.
I actually don't agree with the 24. I think it's, especially because if we're going to make it from the end of the snow, then it becomes another moving target again. When is 24 hours from the end of the snow? Also, I think 24 hours is super quick, and I understand that there's no, we're not doing anything, there's no threat behind it at all, but if people are gone, they're going to say, oh, well, the snow plow hasn't come through yet, but I'm expected to clear my sidewalk in 24 hours. I just, I feel like most people do that already, so this 72 hours is to let people know who aren't maybe on top of it. I, I mean, I guess I would at least compromise with 48. I just feel like 24 from the end of the snow makes it wobbly.
It's an aspiration.
Forty-eight? I mean, does it even matter? I mean, at the end of the day, what we're going to do is put a door hanger on somebody's property that has, you know, a bunch of snow that makes their sidewalk impassable, whether that's, you know, I don't see it, I see it happening to the chronic people or people that have issues that can't get it done and need help. That's going to be a sustainable problem, not a 24-hour problem.
Plus, the snow plow usually is, usually is through within 48 hours of a massive snowfall.
And worst case, worst case scenario, you wasted three cents on a door hanger because someone's going to get to it.
Right.
Mr. Douglas.
Well, so what about that two-inch snowfall? When we don't even send plows out? Do we?
And services don't, don't clear. I mean, typically, services are like at a four-inch threshold, then they engage.
Oh, that's, that's great.
Okay, we have a motion on the table. Any other discussion? Forty-eight?
Do we, do we didn't, it's, the motion was 72, I think.
No, it's, there's no numbers in it.
There's no number?
There's no numbers in it.
No, I just.
So, the motion is to direct staff to come back with a communication strategy. We can fine tune, like, those kinds of blanks when they come back. But I think that, you know, between the texts that go out, the social media alerts, and, you know, a door hanger program, we're talking about stuff that's already baked in. We're giving residents an outlet to alert the city if there's a neighbor that has a chronic problem, and we could say, hey, here's, here's some resources if you're having a hard time, you know, it would be great if you could clear your walk. I don't think, I, I think that's as good a touch as we're going to get, well, as good a result as we're going to get from plowing someone's walk seven days later after the snow's already melted, in most cases anyway, which I don't know how that, how that fixes anything. So this, to me, seems like a good step forward. Mr. Johnson disagrees, but I think it's a good idea.
It's hard to read Mr. Johnson's facial expressions most of the time. Commissioner Gibbs.
And I think that's a fabulous, I, I really appreciate your statement, and that's a great step forward. If we could just add, include in those instructions, that, that direction from staff, all the methods of communication that are available for the city to reach the residents, so that all the residents out there have that information, we have that information, there may be a